Good evening, everyone. If everyone could go ahead and take a seat. We'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening for our Menlo Park City Council meeting today, September 10th, 2019. Very quickly, I'd like to go ahead and introduce folks here. So here down off the dais, to our far left, we have our city attorney, Mr. Bill McClure. To his immediate right, we have our assistant city manager, Nick Pagaros. To my far left on the dais, we have city council member Catherine Carlton. To my immediate left, we have Mayor Protam Cecilia Taylor. To my immediate right, we have council member Betsy Nash. To her right, we have council member Drew Combs. And then down off the dais, we have our city clerk Judy Heron. If you want to go ahead and speak on any item on the agenda this evening, or if you'd like to speak in public comment, if you could please fill out a card in the back of the room and provide that to Ms. Heron, so we know when to call on you, that'd be great. If everyone could go ahead and please join me now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it's our practice here at the City Council to start our meetings honoring people or organizations in the community who have made a difference in our city, to help make it the wonderful place in which we live. And tonight, actually, we're here, we're going to start our meeting honoring the memory of Ms. Esther Bogna. And I see Dee, you made it just in time. Dee, if you could come, actually, if you could join me. So I'd like to introduce everybody to Dee Sharp, who is Esther's niece. So Esther, excuse me, Esther was a really special person in our city. She served the Menlo Park community for many years, and the Menlo Park Historical Association, and also on our city's library commission. And she was a lifelong resident here. She attended schools, including Fremont School, St. Joseph's Parochial School, and Notre Dame High School, so lifelong resident of the peninsula. She graduated with honors from Notre Dame Diner University, where she studied biological sciences. And then she spent most of her career, 35 years, working at NASA Ames Research Center. I have to tell you, I knew Esther for a long time, and she was incredibly humble about her career. And I didn't learn about all the wonderful things that she had accomplished at NASA, or all the responsibilities she had, until actually at her memorial. And it spoke, and it was such a statement to me in her death about who she was, that she gave so much in service of the community and never once talked about who she had been in her professional life. It was really an amazing statement. She was married for more than 30 years to Ted Sorensen, a former Menlo Park mayor who died in 2006. And before marrying Ted, she had accomplished something that was unheard of way back in the '60s. She had purchased her own home here in Menlo Park as a single woman in her 30s. She celebrated 50 years of homeownership in 2017. She was a kind, sweet person, and every interaction showed her sharp intellect. I know I've spoken to other council members who have talked about when they ran for council, she'd invite you into the kitchen, and she'd talk to you about the city. And she used that knowledge of her city, of her love and passion for the city, and shared that wisdom with you, and shared the wisdom that she had also gained from Ted, from his time as mayor. And she shared that unselfishly, and you felt like you were definitely being interviewed for the job. And then afterwards, she was always there to send you an email after a tough meeting with a word of encouragement or some wisdom of how to move forward. She passed away in May at the age of 84. And in honor of her lifelong dedication and service to her hometown, we actually are unveiling two honors in her memory. First, we have this little free library. Esther played a key role in bringing this program to Menlo Park, and it was the library commission's and our library professional staff's idea to dedicate this in her honor, which is so fitting. And then the second thing, which came up actually at her memorial, was that her husband, Ted, had had a plaque in his memory that was in the park, in Willow Oaks Park, near where they lived. And it was talked about with the family, wouldn't it be an incredible thing to add her name to that plaque? And so we have. And so I'd like to go ahead and share this with Dee. So we'll be adding that to the park real soon. And with that, would you like to say? No? All right, well, how about a hug and a picture?
You crying?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to give Dee and Esther a round of applause. Actually, the library commissioners want to come up and the library professional staff will do a random few. Let's do it in front of the little free library. No? You're fine. Oh, gee. All right, guys, let's go ahead. We'll move in front of the library. Does that work yet? All right. It's going to be a little break. Okay. All right. Our first item of the evening, this evening, is public comment. So under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. If you could please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. So the city council cannot act on or respond to items not listed on the agenda. So under this public comment, if you're making a comment, we're not going to be able to respond to you. And more than likely, what we're going to do, I'll just tell you now in advance, we're going to direct you to our city attorney and our assistant city manager to go ahead and help you out with those issues. So I'm going to go ahead, and at this time, our first public comment speaker is Stephanie Miller. Good evening, Ms. Miller.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Miller. I live in Lynnfield Oaks, Menlo Park, and I'm here with some colleagues and friends who also live in the area. This past Labor Day weekend, an Asian-American friend of mine was walking alone in the afternoon through Burgess Park. In a parking lot, she encountered a car of mostly teenage boys coming toward her. The car tried to hit her. She got out of the way. The car turned around and tried again. They got out of the car and surrounded her, holding metal objects as weapons. They hurled racial epithets toward her. She managed to get away from them, taking shelter in the library. She believes they were walking to the skateboard area. She reported this incident to the police the next day. She was told by the officer that not a lot could be done, since she had no evidence, no video or photographs. Security camera footage is being reviewed. She seemed dubious that anything would be solved or addressed. This unfortunately wasn't the first incident of this kind for my friend. Previously, she was in the CVS drugstore in Menlo Park. A man confronted her, telling her that chinks and gooks are taking over and wanted to kill them all. She ran out of the store. A couple of months ago, I also experienced racist remarks. I was crossing Middlefield at Willow, walking my bike. A Caucasian male on a bike was crossing the same intersection from the opposite direction. He was yelling at me in an incomprehensible manner, but as I got closer, I heard him say to me, "F-ing Asian." I ignored him and continued on my way home. I never saw him again. I reported this incident to the police. I'm recounting these incidents for the following reasons: to raise awareness that these incidents of aggression based on racial prejudice are happening right here; in addition to tracking hate crimes, are police tracking hate-motivated incidents and instances of white nationalist propaganda, which have the potential to sow hate crimes in the future? What are the cognizant police forces, city council, government officials, educators, and community in general doing to encourage reporting of such incidents, to raise awareness and prevent these incidents from happening in the future? People in various communities in the U.S. are becoming victims of violence and aggression just because of their race and ethnicity. Two tragic and recent examples are the mass shooting at the Gilroy Garlic Festival, where the shooter posted a racist manifesto prior to acting, and the shooting at a Walmart in El Paso, where the shooter was targeting Mexican-Americans. These are the results of unchecked racial hatred. What are we in Menlo Park doing to prevent trauma and loss of life stemming from racial hatred from happening here? I hereby request that the Menlo --
You can finish.
I hereby request that the Menlo City Council put the topic of hate crimes and incidents in our community on the agenda for a future council meeting. The topic warrants a robust and considered conversation on how we might work together to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Eldora Lee.
I would like to talk with you all about the street on which I live. That's Menlo Avenue. There are a lot of things happening. I think they're interlaced, they're interrelated, and I wanted to bring it into your awareness. It's becoming increasingly dangerous as a street. There are multiple problems. If you don't easily picture the street, think of El Camino, headed toward Trader Joe's, all the way down to Drager's. That's the street I'm talking about. One side of the street is predominantly businesses. The other side of the street is a mix, small businesses and apartment buildings. So there's a residential and a business quality to the street. Recently, one side of the street had this parking changed to two-hour limit. That was on the business side. So clearly, the people who want free parking all day moved to our side of the street, the residential side. And it is developing peculiar problems. For example, if the large SUV vehicles that are there all day, sit there all day, how am I going to see to get out of my driveway? I can see around a regular sedan, but I can't see beyond these larger vehicles, which clearly belong to the business population. So the things that are happening that were unintended are beginning to happen. When we try to exit the residential driveways, we can't see the oncoming traffic because of the vehicles. Sometimes we have to honk and hope that somebody's out there listening if they're coming toward us. And I think this is becoming an increasing problem. Another problem that is inherent in the street is that there are no storm drains. I think everybody kind of expects a downtown area to have storm drains, and they do the planning with storm drains existing that don't exist. Flooding sometimes is four feet wide and more than four inches high. How do you get across the street if you're a pedestrian? I don't know. It's certainly a challenge. In addition, right at the Trader Joe's corner, there is a very wide pedestrian-marked crossing. It's not a stop street, but it is a pedestrian crossing, and it has very wide white stripes painted onto the asphalt. However, the middle ones have been driven over so much, they're barely visible. So there's no incentive for people to slow down and make space for pedestrians at that point. I would like to add one more thing, that's the increasing number of bicyclists. They tend to be teenagers, and I think that's a difficult mix, and I hope you will direct people's attention to solving these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more public comment cards? No? Okay. We're going to go ahead now, move to our consent calendar. Would any, I'm going to go ahead and pull F5. Would anyone like to pull any other items off the consent calendar?
F1.
Okay. Any other items to pull off the consent calendar?
F2 and F3.
Okay. That's it. So all that's left is F4. I think we'll just go ahead, and can I have a motion to approve F4 right now? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. All right.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call F1. Who offset, Mr. Pagaros?
Thank you, Ms.
So we can go ahead then. Who, council member, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Taylor, did you pull F1? Oh, sorry, council member Nash.
So my first question is whether this covers both electronic as well as hard copy paper versions of the --
I can address that, city clerk Judy Heron. And yes, it does. There are some restrictions where we keep electronic longer than we keep paper, but in this instance, I believe that all is being restricted.
So my concern is that I would like to see staff reports kept electronically.
All staff reports are kept with the agenda packets, which are permanent records.
Oh, okay. So they're searchable within the database?
Correct.
Okay. And then --
They may not all be electronic, but we definitely keep paper permanently.
If there is an electronic version, is the electronic version kept?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Of course.
And then, my other question is about the EIR for the El Camino and Downtown specific plan. I would like to see that, both paper copy and electronic version kept.
I would have to refer to the records retention schedule to see what that length of time is. I'm not sure if the electronic is kept permanently or not.
Okay. I would strongly request that those are kept permanently. I think that that's something that's very actively being looked at, and it would be beneficial to have the 2012 version. Thank you.
I'd be surprised if it wasn't part of an agenda packet, since it was reviewed or referenced in an agenda packet, but let's double-check and make sure. Okay. Yeah. Can we go, yeah, they should be part of the agenda packets. So if we could go ahead and have a motion then?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Protam Taylor.
My question is, how do you decide? Is it just the ordinance that determines when a record is considered obsolete? Because some of the timeframes are different. So with the police records, it's 2016 and previous, but some of the records, like for community service, are not.
So the records retention schedule is based off of government codes, election codes, state laws. Those all vary. Our last update to the records retention schedule was 2011. We did contract that out, most cities do, to kind of work on building that, kind of festivaling it to Menlo Park, because obviously, there are some records that Menlo Park has that maybe another jurisdiction doesn't. And so we kind of have to work with, you know, the laws that we have to make it work for Menlo Park.
So speaking specifically about the police records, so all of them, well, there'll be a digital copy of them? Or all the digital and all the paper of the police records are going to be destroyed?
I would have to double-check, but I do believe that what is before you is to be destroyed, both electronic and paper.
And so in order to change this, we would have to amend the ordinance? Or is it not possible to change it?
It would vary, I suppose. However, like I said, a lot of what are, if not all of our record retention, is based on either state law, government code, election code.
My concern about destroying the records has to do with if there's any research being done on collision history, or some of this is about pollutants, I forget in which staff report. But just thinking about what's happening in Menlo Park right now, destroying any records, I think, wouldn't be a great idea if you're looking for historical knowledge about what's been happening. So I'm trying to figure out, well, how can we change that?
I can, you know, discuss with our city attorney to kind of review, you know, certain documents and what body is governing that law. Offhand, I couldn't tell you, oh, that's something we possibly could keep if we update our records retention, or we, you know, have to destroy. But like I said, a lot of what is on our retention schedule, which is on those to-be-destroyed forms, are governed by laws outside of Menlo Park's control.
Thank you, Judy.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion then to approve F2 with the caveat that we make sure, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I may move to approve, I'm sorry, F1, but with the amendment that we would make sure the specific plan is kept, the EIR is kept, just in case it's not. So can we go ahead? Can I have a second? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 4 to 1, with Mayor Protam Taylor dissenting.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move now to item F2, approve the 2019-20 Finance and Audit Committee work plan. Mayor Protam Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. I have a question. Not sure who to direct it to. And this came in from an email today from Ms. Frye about amending the work plan to include evaluating how well financial impact reports, showing the results, and either confirming whether the current methods or recommendations are working well, and if not, changing them. I'm not sure if anyone had an opportunity.
Actually, I can speak to it. I serve on that committee, and the committee chooses its work plan. So while I appreciate Ms. Frye's email, it might have been helpful to show up actually at the committee meeting and commission and ask for that request, but trust me, there's been a lot of time and effort put into what's in that work plan, starting with a dialogue that began here over a month and a half ago, and then also very detailed discussion in our last commission meeting on what they wanted to work on. So if they wanted to amend it, I think the appropriate place, if Ms. Frye wants to amend it, is to actually meet with the commission and ask them if they want to go ahead and amend their own work plan.
So there's opportunity to amend the work plan, to include it?
If they want to go and speak to the commission and say, would you like to amend the work plan? And the commission agrees to that, the commission can go ahead and always make a request to the council to add to it. But right now, you're basically saying to a commission, I'm sorry, what you chose you wanted to work on, we think you should add this one thing to it.
Well, I think the effort is to have more financial transparency, which I believe is a part of the Finance and Audit Committee's work plan.
But it, I mean, the commission, the Finance and Audit Committee has already indicated what they want their work plan to be in this report. Yeah. Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. I have a question, and it might just be the wording that was used. It says that a majority of the Finance Committee recommended. Was there some dissent, or is that just the wording used and it was unanimously agreed? And if there was dissent, did some people want, I was just wondering on the wording on that.
Actually, one member was absent from the meeting. So all those that were present during the vote did vote in favor of the work plan priorities.
When it's a majority vote, when it's a unanimous vote, it's kind of nice just to let us know, because it makes us feel good that this was something that was really agreed upon, and that there wasn't dissension. Usually, if there's dissension, we hear from people, but it's just nice to know, just for the future, if you don't mind letting us know. The other thing is, I think what they've planned out looks good. I think it's a lot that they are biting off to do, and I commend them for that. And I know that some of this, the staff report points out that they are things that the staff has already identified as a priority. It says, for example, incremental improvement of the CIP program has already been identified as a priority by Finance Division staff. So it makes me happy that what the staff really would like to work on, and what the commissioners really want to work on, is meeting together, and they're leveraging each other's strengths there. Have to ask, it says it could take 40 hours per month, which is kind of a lot. Is that, because the staff were already intending on working on some of this anyway, is that already something that's kind of been factored into their workload? Or are you going to come back to us later and say, well, actually, we didn't get this done or that done, because we're doing 10 hours a week working on this extra thing? I just wanted to have a better understanding on the impact of doing this on staff time.
Good evening. Dan Jacobson, Finance and Budget Manager. So we definitely include work with the Finance and Audit Committee in the finance work plan. So this is as part of what finance staff have available, understanding that there are a number of day-to-day tasks. So finance staff have worked with the Finance and Audit Committee and believe that substantial progress can be made on this work plan as presented.
Wonderful. So it's a win-win-win. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your hard work and your leadership, staff and committee members, and I'm happy to make a motion to --
Yeah. And speaking to the concern raised by my colleagues, this is a very ambitious plan.
It is ambitious.
That was worked very hard with staff in order, with compromise, to try to get to. So at the last hour, to throw something in on top of it would really derail a lot of good faith work that has gone in between the commission and staff, and we're in a good place right now. So, councilmember Nash.
Just two comments. One is that I'm very interested in some of the parking lot items. So if there is ever time to be able to do those, I think that it would be very interesting to get Finance and Audit review of some of the items, such as the utility user tax and development agreements and the such. And the other comment is just if we could, we've done it, staff has done an excellent job giving two weeks' notice now, or almost 10 days' notice, on council meetings. If we can extend that to as many of the commission and committee meetings as possible, that would be helpful, and especially on the Finance Audit Committee meetings, where I don't know that there's a set schedule ahead of time just to alert the public that these meetings are coming up, even if there isn't, even if it's a schedule and then an agenda and staff reports are added later. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Taylor.
Thank you. My last question is, how do you determine staff time, the amount of staff time it takes to get a task or several tasks completed?
It's honestly an estimate based on what we believe the complexity is in the particular task identified. It's also dependent on what staff are available. So most of the things that the Finance and Audit Committee want to work on really do require some of the higher-level staff than the Finance Division, which really limits the ability. So there are perhaps two or three finance staff that would be available for most of these, and so it's dependent on that bottleneck, essentially, and what time is available, after taking into account all of the other must-do things that the Finance Division does.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson.
All right. We have a motion. Can I have a second? Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Our next item is item F3, Adopt Resolution 6522, authorizing the installation of turn restrictions in and around Bellhaven neighborhoods. Did someone want to speak on this? Mayor Protem Taylor.
Is there anyone here from Public Works that had a couple of questions? Hi, Ms. Nagaya. My first question is, the traffic calming study was done over a year ago, so the data isn't current. Do we have any current software that we could use to look at if there's been any changes to make sure that those turn restrictions are in the right place? Because the concern is that, basically, the traffic is going to shift and just go to the next block. They'll just keep going over.
Good evening, councilmembers. Nikki Nagaya, interim Public Works Director. So the data collected as part of the traffic calming study was collected back in 2017. We have supplemented that with a number of both anecdotal observations by staff, as well as we currently are subscribing to an online data platform that provides crowdsourced information that is picked up from cellphones and anonymized. And so we're looking at that as another source of information, and trying to verify if there's been any change in travel patterns in the neighborhood. And so that is a source that we're looking at. I think one of the challenges with any sort of turn restrictions, like what is proposed before you tonight, is that there is a chance that you will see those shifts in behavior as you're describing. And so as an example, in the particular item before you, there are three turn restrictions proposed at Hamilton Avenue, at Carlton, Madera, and Sevier avenues. And so you could see a potential to have increased traffic on Windermere or Hollyburn in response to those turn restrictions. And that's something that, kind of regardless of the data that we're seeing on the ground today, could, traffic will adapt to find the path of least resistance over time. And so that's something that we'll be monitoring as part of the follow-up evaluation efforts of the traffic calming plans. We'll go back out and collect additional data after things have been installed and patterns have normalized after about a six-month period, and then report that back as part of the evaluation process.
Okay. Is there a possibility that can be done sooner? My concern is that because this is only Phase 1, and Phase 2 will come later, that because we're not doing it all at once, that it'll have more of a negative effect on the residents?
Well, so the restrictions that were proposed to be included in Phase 2, there are two shown on Attachment C. They're highlighted in yellow. One is a turn restriction at the intersection of Constitution and Chilco Streets, and the other is a turn restriction at Newbridge Street and Carlton Avenue. And so those two, we think, are actually more impactful to residents, and that's part of the reason why we recommended putting those into Phase 2, so that really, those two areas are places where you enter the neighborhood as opposed to leave it. And so if you're thinking about the evening commute patterns, somebody trying to get home in the evening, peak hour, is more likely to need to use the intersection at Chilco and Constitution. And so we're not recommending to install that until we verify if the others can be effective and being less impactful to people trying to get home in the evening.
Today was an extremely horrible day in the neighborhood, and so the traffic was backed up on Hamilton. How can we, is there a plan to enforce traffic, these sign restrictions, more often? So whether it's once a week, every other day? Because if they're not enforced, they're useless.
So tonight, we understand there was a crash on the midspan of the Dunbarton Bridge, and so that was causing some backups that were exacerbating traffic on Bayfront, on Willow, and then through the neighborhood as well. So in regards to enforcement, it's definitely something that we're coordinating closely with the police department, so that when the signs are installed, that there's a targeted enforcement effort in order to enforce them from the outset. And that's really what we saw in a similar case study to what was done in the Willow's neighborhood last year. That targeted enforcement at the beginning starts to change patterns. And so then you start to see the drivers find new routes in order to respond to the turn restrictions. One of the other pieces that will be important is that these turn restrictions are enforceable. They're regulatory signs, and so we also will work with the technology providers, the apps like Google Maps and Waze, in order to have them uptake their restrictions and route traffic accordingly. And so if today, Waze, for example, if they're navigating traffic through the neighborhood and out on Hamilton, these turn restrictions could then prevent the app from guiding a driver that direction in the future.
Okay. Thank you. My last comment is that there's still some detour signs left in the neighborhood when there's no longer a detour. So I'm not sure if those are city signs or Caltrans.
I think there are a couple of different constructions, construction projects going on. Willow 101 interchange, those detour signs should be removed, but there's also construction ongoing on 101 with periodic ramp closures at Willow 101 for the, what are called the express lanes on the highway itself. And so they may be detour construction signs related to those ramp closures, so we can verify with Caltrans that they are still in periodic use and get an estimate for when they'll be removed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nagaya.
Okay, with that, can I have a motion on, I'm sorry, can I have a motion on item F3? Okay, in a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, pulled item F5. There are no, we do have a number of speakers on F5, so let's go ahead and take those speakers first. James Tulia, Tulia?
Hi, I'm James Tulia, resident of Sunnyvale. I'm the Chair of Carbon Free Silicon Valley, a regional collaborative group of climate action leaders in this county, as well as in Santa Clara County. And so I'm here to thank you for your ongoing strong support of climate action, and specifically to request your continued leadership in setting strong reach codes that highly encourage all-electric buildings, reduces the amount of fossil fuels in our new building stock. It's important that there are leaders like yourselves in this city that show the way for others, even within Silicon Valley, so that then we can get the ball rolling on other cities to move more strongly in this direction as well, because we're out of time to take strong action. And we in Silicon Valley need to show leadership for the state, and then the state for the nation. So there's a long delay in this leadership. So you being out in front, you know, in the front vanguard is very important. And so I want to continue to encourage you to stay there and show that leadership. The other reason for new building codes to be as strong as possible, to set the stage for the market to move forward on contractors and other professionals in the area to build the market, to have more readily available equipment and expertise to build up, because then that's what leads to the existing buildings to be able to be electrified over time, which is a harder nut to crack. But we have to get there, because after transportation, the fossil fuel greenhouse gases in all buildings is critical for us to achieve our climate action goals and prevent the worst-case scenarios of climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Steve Van Pelt. Good evening, Mr. Van Pelt.
Hi there. Yeah. I'm Steve Van Pelt, a resident for over 30 years in Menlo Park. And it's really hard to disagree with the purpose of what's being written here, but that doesn't mean there aren't warts and things to make it more perfect. So one thing I checked with Drew about, because I'm really coming at a perspective for how this might impact me, and there should be no impact now, but if I chose to rebuild my house, there potentially could be impact. And I realize that I could choose to tear the whole thing down, and then it would be new construction, or I have the control of keeping it grandfathered in by not tearing the whole thing down and things. I don't have any health problems where I need 24 by 7 electricity, but I know there are a lot of people in the neighborhood. I mean, I got that information from the PG&E guy that was out looking to see if my tree needed to be trimmed. And there was something in response to what I talked about before, where you can install batteries to keep things going and things like that. I just received something from PG&E this morning called PG&E Energy Advisor, talking about public safety power shut-off. Now, this really impacts things up in the mountains. Don't even know whether it would impact us. But if we were to suffer one of these, these things could last for days. And one of the final things they talk about, there's a video, and it asks, is your gas-powered generator ready to deliver electricity? So PG&E is still thinking of having a generator if you need to have 24 by 7. Obviously, there need to be better things to do this. Looking at the coverage on the Weather Channel of Hurricane Dorian, there was an ad for a generator that can automatically tie into your gas or your propane tank. I can feel people's eyes rolling behind me. But this is the reality of where technology is today for the majority of the country and things. I don't want us to get too far forward beyond that. There was an article in the Mercury News, which somebody said, I've only had five minutes of outage in the last 10 years, or maybe it was 10 minutes in the last five years. That's kind of unimportant. At my home, from PG&E records that they send me, we had an outage of 5 hours and 52 minutes on 3rd October 2018. On just recently, 3rd of August, there was an outage of an hour and 47 minutes. There are two other outages that I know occurred that PG&E has no records for. So these are not super serious to me right now, but we need to keep these things into account, how we're going to do this for everybody. I don't think everybody can install a wall full of batteries to keep things going. We're going to be in a situation where we don't know how long you'd have to have that backup going.
Thank you, Mr. Van Pelt. Our next speaker this evening is Nicole Kemeney.
Hello. My name is Nicole, as stated, and I'm a Menlo Park resident. I'm also very involved in climate activism and have been since I moved to California. I really doubt that I need to persuade anybody on the council that the climate is the most serious issue that we face. I'm pretty sure everybody is very aware of that, and I'm pretty sure that you are all very concerned about it and cognizant that business as usual simply isn't going to cut it anymore, and that the first priority that we have to keep highest in our mind at all times is that we have one massive problem to focus on, and the things that we do need to be in the service of trying to stave off the worst outcomes. So we might have to do some things differently. Some of them might be unfamiliar, but the leadership that Menlo Park has shown is going to smooth the way for others. And if we don't do it, who's going to do it? And if we don't do it now, when are we going to do it? So I want to share the fact that I'm very much in favor of the strongest climate actions that are possible for us to take, that we should take them. And I think that I can fairly speak for my friends in the neighborhood and the other moms at school, that when we walk and we talk, the other people that I know seem to feel exactly as I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Sherry Zaslowsky.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Good to see you all. And now for something completely different. I'm here to advocate for gas stoves. But first, let me say that I've done research and discovered that only 4.5% of the energy we use at home is generated, is used for cooking. And so any change we make in the stoves will be negligible in terms of climate or anything else. Also, gas stoves are the gold standard. Anybody who cares about cooking and has cooked on gas and tried electric knows this. I call electric stoves glorified hot plates. And, you know, there's a question of efficiency. There are more things in life than carbon dioxide. When you turn on a gas stove, you turn on a burner, immediately you have the fire. You turn on a burner of an electric stove, and you wait, and you wait, and you wait. And then it gets too hot, and you turn it down, and you wait. Gas stove, you turn, and it's down, you turn, and it's off. Now, I love electricity. It's good for so many things, and clean electricity, all the better. However, gas is simply more efficient and more effective when it comes to heating, particularly stoves, that's my main concern, but heating as well. And I also learned that most electricity generated from gas plants has, produces four times more carbon dioxide emissions than just using gas itself, gas through a pipeline. So with Peninsula Clean Energy, we get 50% the clean electricity and 50% from presumably gas-powered plants. So that would bring our electric energy, make it only two times more emissions of carbon dioxide than gas. Also, power outages, big, big problem when the electricity goes out if you don't have gas. It's really unsafe. I have gas stove, gas heater, gas water heater. I have hot water, I can cook, I can stay warm. I feel sorry for people in all-electric homes. We're just not there yet. I also looked up PCE, and their biggest players are not even operational yet. I don't see the reason to rush. I think we should take a couple of years, wait till Peninsula Clean Energy has its full component of green electric resources. Also, I care about free choice. I care that the individuals have the right and deserve to make our own choices when it comes to a gas stove or an electric stove. I would like to see government out of our kitchens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Gladwin De Souza.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council, and thank you for what you're doing on reach codes. Thank you for the leadership you're showing in the region, and thank you for bringing forward one of the most leading reach codes in the region. Now we get to point to you when we tell other cities what to do instead of your neighbor to the south. And I didn't introduce myself, I'm Gladwin De Souza from the Sierra Club, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Loma Prieta chapter, thanking you for this effort. Last week, the power was shut down in my neighborhood, because PG&E was working on the power lines, and the gas was also shut off. We couldn't use it for backup. You probably heard in paradise when how people knew how fast the fire was approaching their house was by the gas, the propane tanks blowing up. Wolfgang Puck uses induction stoves. I use an induction stove. It works really well. I'm going to tell you a story. When I was in Los Gatos advocating for reach codes, a person came up to me and said she would never get off her gas stove. And I told her, that's what my grandmother said when my father offered to replace our cold stove with a propane stove. Times change. You guys have figured out how to give us a healthier, safer place. So thank you for what you've done.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Ryan Price. Our next speaker this evening is Ryan Price.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Price. I am the Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission here in Menlo Park. I've been up here to speak to you about this a couple of times. So I wanted to remind everybody that the EQC did unanimously vote to support the staff recommendation. The foundation for this was that a recommendation of this kind for the reach code does reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Menlo Park with the current slate of projected new construction by 5 to 6 tons per year for the next 30 years, which is a significant amount. I also wanted to share a little bit more about the criteria that the EQC used when considering options. So, obviously, reducing the greenhouse gas in a significant way was a priority, but in addition to that, we felt really strongly about making sure that there was a code that had an ease of implementation for all of our members in the building community, as well as efficiency and its ability to be adopted. Consumer preference and community acceptance were also significant criteria for us. And I think this is why the right for the single occupancy home was to both have ambient, meaning fireplaces, as well as cooking services, was maintained throughout our recommendation process, because we do think that people need to have those choices. And I think that when council last spoke about this, you had stressed different appeals processes for various situations, and I think, again, that further enhances people's ability to address edge cases, as you've heard a few comments tonight. I did notice that there were a few comments from others that you received via email, and I think that another point to remember is that this process involves a cost-effectiveness study. So if this were, in fact, more expensive, this wouldn't be the recommendation. Part of the criteria for reach codes is ensuring that whatever's recommended is no more expensive. And when, if you look at the report from staff, it shows that implementing this is less expensive across each housing group that was looked at, which includes offices, retail, single-family homes, multifamily homes, and hotel units. So, in conclusion, I think that the staff and the EQC have spent a lot of time on this issue. The knowledge and research has run deeply into investigating various concerns that have been raised, and I do think we still believe as the EQC that this reach code would be significantly beneficial to Menlo Park and maintain both cost-effective community and consumer preferences. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Doug Silverstein.
Good evening, council members. My name is Doug Silverstein. I'm a 25-year Burlingame resident and nonprofit leader in San Mateo County in the area of environment and sustainability. I'm a board member of Citizens Environmental Council of Burlingame. We work very closely with our council on our climate action plan and other sustainability measures. I'm a volunteer of other nonprofits in the county, and I'm also a committee member on the CCAG Resource Management and Climate Protection with Councilmember Combs. I want to, first, thank you for your leadership. I'm continually impressed with all of our local leaders and proud to be a member of this county. I want to, I want to say that I'm very encouraged by your leadership in this area of green building codes, as well as a number of different areas, electric vehicle, charging stations, et cetera. And I just, I obviously am a strong proponent of good greening, green building codes. It seems like a small thing, but really, we know it's a big signal. It does have a significant reduction in greenhouse gases, but it's also a signal to the market, and it's a signal to the future leaders that are going to try and decide what decisions they're going to make. Lastly, I just want to say that the nonprofit community is really looking forward to partnering with our council members across the county and our supervisors. And I think it's great to see other nonprofit leaders here, and just want to let you know that we want to sit down with you, understand what your concerns are, let you know what we are striving for, and work together in partnership. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Zoe Wong Van Heren.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Zoe. I'm a student at Palo Alto High School. I'm a senior, and I'm here in support of the Fossil Free Buildings Campaign. And I know that sometimes out of sight can be sort of out of mind, but I just wanted to be here to say something and represent myself and other teenagers and other young people in my community and elsewhere who believe that this is something that's really important. It's not just adults who are here supporting the campaign, but it's also other people such as myself. And our aim is thinking about the future. I just want you to know that your leadership and change will be more than just your city, but also others like my city in Palo Alto and everywhere else that we're trying to reach. And I just want you guys to think of the future and think of not just yourselves, but everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Karen Grove.
Good evening. I would like to tell you that my mom was very skeptical about this getting rid of her gas stove thing, and she bought an induction stove top from Amazon, and she loves it. So, with that out of the way, I just want to say, this is absolutely the right thing to do. It's the right time to do it, and you're going to make me so proud. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is James Payne.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So my name is James Payne. I'm a resident of the Belle Haven neighborhood here. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the tremendous leadership you've shown so far on this issue, as well as thank staff and all the other commenters. Other people have spoken with more depth and eloquence as to the environmental and financial and safety and leadership benefits we can really draw from these reach codes. I just wanted to add one perspective that I don't think we've really talked about much here. It's a relatively small one, but, so my wife and I currently live in Menlo Park, but we rent our house, but we're currently looking to buy a house. And as we're looking at potential future homes, one factor we're considering is the climate resiliency of those homes. Zillow doesn't have a feature for this yet, so it takes a little bit of extra research, but a house is a big, long investment, so it merits that research. And so, climate resiliency really means two things. And one is how well that house is situated for how the world will change with climate change, making sure that the house won't be underwater at some point in our lifetimes, for example. But another is making sure that that house is well situated for how society is going to change with climate change. And really, the consensus vision of that that's emerged is a society that has a 100% renewable electricity grid, and then we power our homes and our businesses and our cars and our industry with that clean electricity. Menlo Park is very well situated to take advantage of this. We have Peninsula Clean Energy currently providing 90% of our electricity carbon-free. I think the speaker earlier said 50%, but it's currently 90%, and in two years will be 100%. And so, we're very well set up to future-proof our homes and make sure that they're where they need to be in the future, both for prospective homeowners and for society in general. So, thank you again. And again, that's a small consideration, but in addition to the opportunity for Menlo Park to be a leader for the rest of the area and for the world, and just for the sake of the environment, I urge you to adopt these reach codes. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Tom Cabot. Did I say it wrong, Tom? Cabot. I gotta, I don't know why. I do that every time.
Our family says it wrong. You've got it right. So, good evening.
I'll take it.
My grandfather was adopted by a Czech gentleman, and so you're pronouncing it the proper way. But my family doesn't. All right. Thank you.
My family does the same thing with my name.
All right. Thank you very much, council members. I'm actually very happy to get to talk to you again about reach codes. So it's nice that you were able to bring this off the consent calendar, so we could start to address some of the concerns the community is raising. I looked at the emails and heard a few comments, one about resiliency and about what runs and what doesn't run when there's a power outage. And our modern gas-fired appliances don't run in a power outage. Our furnaces don't turn on. Their igniter doesn't turn on. For safety reasons, it's off. It also doesn't have electricity to it. There's no power to run the fan to circulate the air. So the furnace isn't there. The cooktop, you might be able to light it with a match if you could find one of those, and so that's possible to do. The modern vented water heaters, like my neighbor has, that blows like a little jet engine, that won't run because there's no fan to power the blower. The tankless gas-water heaters won't run. They don't have the ignition to turn on. So, this resiliency thing is a little bit different. We don't need that much power in an outage, and it's turning out that we've got these mobile batteries that people are buying. This community has one of the highest uptake of mobile batteries, these electric vehicles. And what's happening is after the Fukushima disaster, the Japanese have redesigned the Leaf car, and now it has a two-way charging system that's becoming available later this year in California. And so people will be able to rely on their car for their backup power. So that can help these new houses that will be constructed over the next few years. So, resiliency is addressable. There are lots of ways to do it. The ways are getting better, faster, the cost of batteries is dropping. The other thing is about just what is the fossil comparison of using, heating a home with gas versus heat pump? And so I will have to do it with interpretive dance. If you want 15 units, excuse me, if you want 12 units of heat in your home, so that's 12 units of heat from the floor up, if you use a gas furnace that's 80% efficient, you need 15 units of gas to put in the 80% efficient furnace to get 12 units of heat. If you want to get 12 units of heat out of a heat pump, it uses four units of electricity, and it goes and grabs eight units of heat out of the air, puts all 12 into the house. It only needed four units of electricity. It got those from a power plant. The power plant had to put out 4.3 units of electricity. Point three got lost in the grid through warm wires, but the four units of electricity had to come from somewhere. The Peninsula Clean Energy has 90% annual carbon-free electricity. So 90% of that four units has to come from fossil-free sources over the course of a year. They may have to make it up in later days, but they make it up over the course of each year. And so it really only takes about one unit, one unit of fossil gas to power, delivering 12 units of heat versus 15 through a furnace. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Our next speaker this evening is Josh Becker.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. I'm here as a proud member of, advisory board member of Menlo Spark. In the fight for climate change, we all have to decide, what is each of us going to do? What are we going to do for our children? What are we going to do for our future? And in that fight, there are different heroes along the way, and we look to different cities. This is happening here, this is happening this around the world, and it's a great pride to think that Menlo Park can be a leader, and you are leading in this issue. As we heard, EQC went through a very, very thorough process in developing these regulations. I believe that ultimately, this is going to save money in construction costs, improve health and safety, and each new electric home saves four tons of carbon. So thank you very much for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Diane Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I lead a community climate action group called Menlo Spark, working towards a zero-carbon future for Menlo Park and the region. And also, we're part of Fossil Free Buildings in Silicon Valley, a new campaign comprised of 20 groups supporting a swift transition away from fossil fuel use in our buildings. I'm here to express really strong support for the proposed electric reach code. I'm really grateful for all the work that EQC and staff have put into this measure. This is really the strongest measure in our region, and Menlo Park is really stepping up. And so, this is a moment in time where we really need leadership on climate action, and here we have it. So, we're grateful for that. I want to point out that every new home and building is really an opportunity to break the cycle of dependence on fossil fuels. And other folks spoke to climate, so I'm going to skip right to some of the concerns that came up today about cost and energy efficiency, and some of my colleagues have spoken to them, but I want to note that a lot of architects are talking about trends where they're already designing all-electric buildings. This was the future, only it's now. And so, you heard from Scott Schell at the last hearing in late August, and he was not able to be here today, but he did submit a survey that they've done of other architects in the region. And I'm just going to read one quote, because I think it really captures the spirit of what we're hearing from the leading architects and building designers today. This is from Malcolm Harris, principal at Methune. He notes that, "We have a number of all-electric multifamily housing projects, and I'm a huge, huge fan of this change to all-electric multifamily. It's better in every way, a great simplification of the system. It's less expensive, higher performance, less maintenance, and more sustainable. It is a major cost-saving move that pays for a lot of other upgrades." And with their Maseo May Veterans Apartments on Treasure Island, he notes that they saw big savings from eliminating gas-fired heating and the gas connection, as well as the solar thermal required by the state energy code. The savings paid for continuous exterior insulation and a lot of other energy upgrades, including solar, and they ultimately beat the state code by 20%, and that meant a lot lower greenhouse gas emissions. And ultimately, the occupants get better indoor air quality with these projects. And so, these are the comments that we're hearing from leading architects and designers today, and the benefits are very clear. And so we're really grateful that Menlo Park is leading on a movement to all-electric and gas-free buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Deb Martin.
Good evening. Good evening, council members and Mayor Mueller. Thank you for having me here today and for listening to all the comments from, I think a lot of people are in support of this reach code effort. And obviously, I both represent, I both serve on the EQC and I'm a resident of Suburban Park. I've had the pleasure of watching this city just continuously move the needle on sustainability, and it's been my great honor to serve on the EQC. So this is a really special moment in our city's history. I'm obviously here to support the reach code effort. We have an opportunity to be a leader. We have been a leader, and I think this even is, puts us in a better spotlight to be a great leader, to support climate change reduction. It is the right thing to do. It's the right time to do it. We need leadership in local government, and I think that by making a stance in Menlo Park, we can also help promote other cities to do the same. So I encourage you all to move forward with the reach code effort, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, that was our last public comment. I've been informed that we have a presentation by professional staff, so let's go ahead and take the presentation at this time.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Mueller. Here tonight to give you some more information about the draft reach codes that are before you tonight for adoption. Before I go forward, just want to introduce the team again. So this has involved staff from multiple departments. So on the interior, I have Chuck Andrews, who's our building official, Joanna Chen, our sustainability specialist, who's been crunching a lot of the data, and behind me, Kara Silver from the city attorney's office, who's helped us draft code language and check legal facts and other outcomes that we've needed. Externally, we've had support from TRC, who's an energy consultant. They have helped develop the cost-effectiveness studies that are over 200 to 300 pages long, and have helped guide us in understanding the cost-effectiveness study. And of course, we've had the Environmental Quality Commission. So Joanna and I are going to tag-team again and go through the presentation to give you a little bit more information and as the public.
Great. So the reach codes only apply to newly constructed buildings, so that does not include additions, remodels. The reach codes apply to both residential and non-residential buildings. So residential is defined, single-family buildings and multifamily buildings that are three stories or less. So on the August 21st meeting, staff recommended at minimum, these buildings must be electrically heated or all-electric. But we got further direction from city council to require all-electric closed dryer, and for the building to be electric-ready, pre-wiring for stoves and fireplaces for future electric appliance insulation. For the non-residential buildings, it is defined as retails, offices... For the non-residential buildings, it is defined as retails, offices, and high-rise multifamily buildings that are three stories or greater. Staff recommended that all buildings must be all-electric with two exceptions, labs and emergency centers. And staff also recommended to remove the exception for for-profit restaurants' use of natural gas stoves. And lastly, we, staff recommended to install minimum amount of onsite solar panel. City council agreed with staff's recommendation but provided further direction to allow appeal process for non-residential kitchens to use natural gas stoves, pre-wiring for electric appliances for all building types where natural gas is allowed through exceptions or appeal, and to explore floor area ratio exclusions. So staff's recommendation for today is, for new residential buildings, REACH codes to require, to build nearly all-electric building except stoves and fireplaces, and to have the buildings to be electric-ready, pre-wiring is required where natural gas stoves and fireplace are used. Staff recommends the REACH codes to require for non-residential buildings to require all-electric building that uses electricity as a source of energy for all appliances. Exceptions for life science, space heating, emergency centers, and allowing appeal for restaurants to use gas stoves or cooking appliances. Natural gas appliance locations must be electrically pre-wired for future electric appliance installations. Note that appeals will be heard by city council-appointed bodies such as planning commission or the environmental commission. Staff needs slight clarification to ensure that the council designates which body hears the appeals, and that the bodies are not chosen by the applicants. And the second requirement is to install a minimum amount of onsite solar based on square footage. So a building that is less than 10,000 square feet would require a minimum of three kilowatt photovoltaic system. Buildings greater than 10,000 square feet requires a minimum of five kilowatt photovoltaic system.
So, public comments have been received, and so we just wanted to provide some background information through the staff report and just other foundational information to help provide some context for the council. And so the first one is natural gas impacts and the future of natural gas. So natural gas is a fossil fuel that emits greenhouse gas emissions when it's burned, which contributes to climate change. Further, the state is requiring the phase-out of fossil fuels, and this does include natural gas. There are two state pieces of legislation that are requiring this or affect this for natural gas. The first one is that the building sector must reduce greenhouse gas emissions generated by space and water heating by forty percent over 1990 levels by 2030. The second one is that the state is requiring that all electricity produced in the state be 100% renewable by 2045. Further, in the last meeting, we received a letter from PG&E that supported electrification of buildings because they are really not interested in continuing on with an infrastructure that's going to be phased out in the future, and their natural gas infrastructure currently is in need of significant repair and upgrades. Menlo Park's energy portfolio is quite different than other communities around the state, which is why it creates this unique opportunity. We are, our electric provider is Peninsula Clean Energy, and as Tom mentioned, it provides ninety percent greenhouse gas-free electricity now, and they are aiming to provide 100% greenhouse gas-free electricity by 2021, which is this building code cycle for the REACH codes. Future, so this means that all future electric, all-electric buildings will be greenhouse gas-free, and the electricity will not be sourced by a fossil fuel that is natural So the cost-effectiveness study results presented in the staff report and in past meetings show different building prototypes that were analyzed, which were single-family homes, multifamily, office, retail, and hotel. There are lots of different kinds of buildings to model. However, this was a statewide cost-effectiveness study that was commissioned by PG&E and other energy companies, and again, done by energy consultants like TRC and other consultants that have expertise in this. So really, when you look at the comparison between an all-electric and a natural gas building, most of the savings are really experienced in the construction upfront costs avoided in having to install piping for natural gas. So for a single-family home, the upfront construction savings is $5,349. It goes all the way up to a hotel where you can experience $1.3 million in savings by not having to install natural gas infrastructure. For operational savings over the life of the building, that varies for single-family, and the cost-effectiveness study uses a 15-year timeline for residential and a 30-year life expectancy for non-residential. And so again, there's savings on all building prototypes. So for residential, it's about $4,000; for hotels, it's 1.24 million. And I'm going to talk in the next slide a little bit how operational savings is calculated. So operational savings is calculated by using time-dependent valuation, and this was established by the California Energy Commission to use when cities are looking at making more stringent standards than the state energy code. It looks at long-term projected cost of energy, which includes the generation of energy, includes the system capacity, grid reliability costs, system losses, transmission and distribution capacity to meet peak demands. In addition to all of that, it also includes a value on greenhouse gas emissions produced or avoided. And many argue that it doesn't capture the full cost of greenhouse gas emissions, so it's a very conservative number that they're using. The other is, the other point is the cost of not recovering renewable sources because now you're still investing in natural gas, you're not able to procure renewable energy. So there's a cost to that, and that is included in these, in the operational savings of the building. And again, it's expressed over the life of the building. So it's not a direct calculation if you're just using your utility bill data. If you look at the utility bill data using the metrics from the cost-effectiveness study, there is an increase in electricity over natural gas, and it's minimal to moderate. But there are limitations to this cost-effectiveness study that I'll go through. But just to give you an idea, the cost-effectiveness study has estimated what's the increase in natural gas rates by PG&E? So I've circled between 2020 and 2025, each year you're looking at pretty significant increases because they need to, again, make upgrades to their system. And so we have done a little bit more research, and according to PG&E's website, they are expecting to increase natural gas next year by three and a half percent. And this is really over the projected amount that was estimated in the cost-effectiveness study at 1.48 percent. And furthermore, electricity rates in Menlo Park are not calculated using PG&E's rates. We use Peninsula Clean Energy's, which are lower than PG&E's rates. So as I mentioned before, there are limitations of the cost-effectiveness study because it was a statewide study, it wasn't done individually for Menlo Park. So there are other important factors to consider. So the one again is that we have lower rates than PG&E for electricity because we have Peninsula Clean Energy. The second is that the study used the lowest-rated energy efficiency appliances, which means that consumers can purchase, in the market right now, higher-efficiency appliances that can reduce their utility bills. There are also onsite solar requirements that further reduce utility cost and operation, and give you more operational savings. I think as Tom also mentioned about heat pumps, they are three to 400 times more efficient than natural gas heating appliances. So with this other information, it's anticipated that the utility bills will be lower than what was projected in the cost-effectiveness study. With that, I'll hand induction stoves to our expert, Joanna.
So the electric induction stoves are not the same as the traditional electric stoves, the one that you often see with the coils. These induction stoves are two to three times more efficient than the natural gas stoves because they're able to heat up faster. In the 2018 Consumer Report, the top ten rated stoves are all-electric induction stoves. It is widely used by well-known chefs and restaurants such as French Laundry and celebrity Michelin chef Curtis Stone. So induction stoves are safer to operate, and they provide safer indoor air quality. It costs slightly more than natural gas, a $300 difference, can only use magnetic cookware such as cast iron, some stainless steel, excludes glass and non-magnetic grade metals. And if the public is interested in learning more about induction stoves, there is a demonstration in Brillengame at the Sub-Zero Wolf and Cove showroom. It's on Thursday, October 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. So if we take a moment and zoom out of Menlo Park and look at United States as a whole, one out of four U.S. homes are all-electric?
Just to close out the timeline and engagement process thus far, so this was started in February, January as a council, city council work plan item. So we've had three city council meetings, including this one, and three environmental quality commission meetings that have covered this topic and proposed policy. It's been covered by various newspaper and media outlets, and staff has met with major development stakeholders to reach resolutions. And for the implementation time, the goal is to implement this by January 1st. If that is the desire of council, then a decision really needs to be made tonight in order for us to file with the California Energy Commission, which takes a 60-day approval process. And then after we get approval from the California Energy Commission, we would then need to get approval from the California Building Standards Commission, that takes another 30 days. With that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question for Mr. Andrews. We received an email today from a building department official with the city. Have you had a chance to review it? No? Do you have a copy of it here? What I'd like to do is if you could actually get onto the city council email and take a look at that, and we'll take questions from the rest of council members. But as you are the building official designated to that, I'd really like you to take a look at that, and so that I know that the issue's been dealt with. So if we could get him on an email to look at it. But it's an unusual circumstance. I've been on city council for six and a half years and also worked in Santa Clara County, and I haven't seen a difference of opinion in staff before come out. So if you could go ahead and take a look at that email.
I believe the email just went to council members.
Okay, then let's go ahead and forward it, forward it to him. Thank you, Mr. Collins. So let's go ahead, and are any of there questions at this time from council members? Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute, all right, so let's go ahead and go back on the record. All right, so back on the record.
Yes.
We're going to bring the meeting back to order, folks. Okay, so you folks have had a chance to review the email record. Mr., Ms. Fotu, did you want to speak to that?
Lucky.
Did I say the wrong name?
[laughing]
I'm so sorry.
Don't worry.
Ms. Lucky. I used to be.
Thank you, yes.
I'm so sorry.
So we have all had a chance to review the email as directed by city council, and again, there, as many people would, there is challenges to analyzing data, and this is not a straightforward calculation, as I mentioned before, from using your utility bills. There are a lot of other factors that have been accounted for in social costs. And again, those are choices being made in how to use this analysis over the life of buildings. So as I mentioned before, it includes peak demand, it includes grid resilience, it includes energy generation, but it also includes the value of a greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions, as well as not procuring renewable energy. Those all have a cost to it that are included as in the operational savings. So we read the email and still agree that the recommendation is cost-effective to go forward with.
And that's the, that's the opinion of the building official as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to my colleagues, see if they have any questions at this time. No questions from my colleagues? Does someone want to make a motion?
I have questions.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah, I mean, it's funny they should, he should call that out because I was also looking at things like, there's a statement, "It also provides a value for GHG emissions produced, reduced as part of the calculation." I wasn't going to call it out on the dais, I was just going to follow up with you later to better understand how you do this, because I think this is actually going to end up costing people more, but that's not, that's not why we're doing it. We're doing it because it's for the environment, and there's kind of a greater level of, greater scale of why we're looking at this. My concern, I don't really, I'm sorry, I just don't understand. I remember there was an issue with Tarleton and with some of the life sciences, and again, I don't spend any time at all in Tarleton's place, so I don't really know if they sit around with bunsen burners or like, what they're actually doing in there for the science research. But I know it is a bioscience place, and it is making the world a better place by what's invented and developed and coming out of there. And I remember he came previously and discussed concerns with us. And it seems like we're talking about the heating of the building and not the use of the people themselves within the bioscience area. Are we allowing the people that are doing the research that might need that on/off control to use gas where they need to do so, to do their research? Because I'm sorry, I just don't really see where it's clear here, how we address those
So we had a chance, the three of us plus some environmental quality commissioners to spend some time with Mr. Tarleton and touring his buildings and what his needs and concerns were regarding laboratory properties. And what we worked through as a resolution is that they can provide electric water heating, and that really their only concern is for space heating. So the labs that are using space heating are able to get natural gas, or they're still able to pipe natural gas infrastructure if they need it for specific use. And that's, that's the resolution that we landed on. And we talked to him this morning too, about the other requirements about pre-wiring, and we're all on the same page as to how to move forward with that.
Okay, so Tarleton is fine, that this isn't going to negatively impact people who may be doing critical research in his facility?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. And then the other thing I was concerned about is, with the high-rise buildings, it says the state codes don't provide a pathway for large central electric water heating systems to be used for compliance, and the unknown reliability of these electric water systems to provide for domestic hot water. We want people to build, you know, higher-density apartment buildings and things like this, and I don't want to unduly cause them the inability to provide basic necessities for people in doing that. It says, I quote, "This requires innovative thinking and leadership in designing all-electric hot water systems." That's not really a solution, that just says there's a big honking problem here, and I was just wondering what specifically we're doing to address that, to make people feel better that we're not just...
So, Councilmember Carlton, at the last meeting, when you were on the phone, actually Greenheart, Grayheart spoke to this issue and indicated that they wanted to look for flexibility with their building department and planning department, but they were willing to try to make this work, that they thought they could make this work, even with this, with this language. So one of our big actual, well, one of our stakeholders with a very large multifamily unit project has actually looked at this issue and said, "We're willing to try to figure out a way to work this out with the city."
Okay. I'm not picking on one particular thing, I'm speaking more generically. Do we know there's a solution, or are we working this out?
There is...
That is my question, because I just want to make sure that we don't put something, once we agree these things, it gets put in proverbial stone, and I want to make sure that there is actually, and I know the, thank you to the developers for wanting to work with us to get this done, I just want to make sure there is a solution.
Right. So when we, when this issue was brought to our attention, we contacted the California Energy Commission, and, because really it's about the state code providing a pathway for large central electric water heaters. And what they advised us on was that those... And what they advised us on was that those, the compliance is not available, as you mentioned, but they are working on providing a pathway over the next 18 months, is what they had informed us about. Their concern is not the technology, it's the fact that you can't just plug in a large central electric water heater where a natural gas boiler used to be, that you have to still have some design parameters around that. And so they want to make sure people do it right, because if you do not do it right, it will not be efficient. So that's their concern over the next 18 months, to make sure that they have design guidelines that go along with the technology. So the alternative pathway to having, instead of these large central electric water heating systems, that you can install units individually in each unit, or you can create what's called mini-plants, where you can have up to eight units being served by one electric water heating unit. And the state code does provide that pathway, and that was a lot of our conversation with GrayStar in, in letting them know about the abundance of, there's a lot of case studies where high-rise residential are using these mini-plants or individual units.
Okay, so there is a solution out there that we're working and putting together, and it will be firmed up in 18 months. As I said, I just want to make sure, I appreciate everybody's good wanting to work together, but want to make sure we don't put anybody behind the eight ball. Excellent, thank you so much. And then I did also have a chance to sit with a couple of chefs from New York, so at least they don't have any skin in the game, and say, so what, what is it about fire that makes this so critical? Why are people so passionate about this? And they were explaining to me that in most restaurants, you don't have empty space, you have different sauces and different things cooking at the same time. If anybody's ever worked in a restaurant, I've worked as a waitress before, and it's like this, you know, you're on, you're off, you're doing the sauce, it's very stressful, everyone's yelling. And you see it on TV, too. But my point being that they were saying that it's that on and off ability to turn your sauces, your things, that make them run more efficiently. And yes, it is possible to do it another way, but they were just saying that that was, because I know Councilmember Combs as well had heard that people were very passionate about, and they were saying it, it really is difficult to do it the other way, it really is more efficient, it's just, I'm trying to find the words. It's, it just works better when you're running a restaurant. And so I was speaking to people here, and they were concerned that in new buildings, we might have trouble getting new restaurants, because people would opt, that, that some chefs are that passionate about this, at least in the, in the short term. And so I wanted to share that, because that had been one of our discussions, I went off and did a little research and found out that was the answer I got, that I don't think anybody's gonna come up and say, "By God, my creme brulee won't work without flame." You know, "I need to have this," you know, maybe they will, but that's less likely than just a deep preference for a kitchen running more effective and efficiently.
Mayor Protem Taylor?
My question is related to a discussion I had earlier with our assistant city manager as far as, in the email that you sent me, Ms. Lucky, how can we create an exemption for those small restaurants that do want to use open flame? They don't want to use electricity.
So currently, we have written in the proposed code language that restaurants that still want to use gas appliances for cooking can appeal to a city council-appointed body. And, you know, there's certain parameters, like they are a barbecue establishment or wood-fired pizza, we gave some examples. But if there are other parameters around small business, you can include that as part of the evaluation, that it would be a hardship for a particular small business, but we would have to create some kind of criteria as to how to establish what is a small, you know, restaurant versus a larger restaurant.
And there's a cost to that for the applicant that would want the waiver? And also a time delay?
Yes, there likely would be those.
So is there a way to create the...
Yeah, so you can, you can, similar to what we've done with emergency centers, there can be an exception made for small restaurants that wouldn't have to go through the appeal process.
Okay. May I follow up on that? So I actually remember, God, when was that, about 10 years ago? We had a woman, and, and she was wonderful, she put together, she wanted to have a wine and cheese shop downtown, it was just the street over, and was not prepared for how long and how tedious the Menlo Park approvals process was going to be. And she basically, you, you start paying rent, and then you're, you're working on getting all these things approved. She ran out of money, she was open just a couple of months and gave up and went out of business, because a lot of these small privately-owned, the kind of wonderful people that we want to have businesses and we want to, to support in our community, don't have sometimes the, the money, the finances to go through all the loops and hoops that we have them go through, to Mayor Protem Taylor's point. And so as smooth as we can make these processes, as clean, as much as we can say, "In case XYZ", you know, we have these things laid out, so you don't have to go through the appeals process, because it does, time is money, you know, another month, that's more rent that they're paying, that's more time that they're, they're being delayed. As, as clean as these processes and smooth as, as we can make them, the better, because then we don't, we're always talking about staff time, then we're not making up more work for staff time and dealing with the appeals and blah, blah, blah. The, the fewer appeals we can do and the more clean language that we can put through, the better for us and them. So I'm just supporting your point.
Thank you.
I wanted to point out that it says that this applies only to newly-constructed buildings and not to remodels or additions, so that this is, I don't believe it'll be applicable in a situation where we've got a new tenant coming in. Well, if it's a new building, then presumably there's a lot of lead time.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, so I actually had a question. So do you guys want us to designate tonight what body or commission we would want to hear these appeals, or is that something along with the parameters of which, you know, an appeal might take place for, for later?
It could be done later.
Okay.
I had one more thing, and that, that was about the, adding back the exemption that natural gas dryers could be used? I don't know if you remember my question on that. I'm just looking at residential, new residential, the affordability on the long term, and just looking at, I believe PG&E will be raising their rates once again, for those who do use PG&E and not peninsula clean energy. So I'm just looking at those things, and then also, what's the plan if we do have a power outage? You know?
So we can certainly add in the exemption for dryers, if that's what council directs as part of the approval for tonight. And as far as the power outage is, I mean, there's been a couple speakers that have spoken about it. There are, in most situations where you have natural gas, it will, if there's a power outage, you will not be able to access your natural gas. It still does need electricity to ignite the flame. So you're still gonna be in the same predicament regardless of whether you're using electricity or natural gas if the power goes out. There's some older, you know, furnaces that may not, or some designs that don't do that, but that's, that's not the commonplace.
And then what about affordability?
So if you could just, affordability is...
As far as, I appreciate the example that you showed about a PG&E bill that you, that you put up, but just looking at affordability, with the amount of construction that's happening in Menlo Park currently, none of those projects will be affected by this, is my assumption. Correct?
So it applies to, yeah, so to new buildings?
So anything after these reach codes go into effect, which is January 1st, 2020.
Right.
And so I'm thinking about any of the current, well, the future projects after January 1st, whether it's single-family residence or an apartment building that's providing all affordable units, the cost to heat each one of those units. I'm looking at how, how is it gonna be affordable for the resident?
Yes. So I've had some conversations with some affordable housing developers, and this is the direction that they are going into, because again, it's safer for residents, you can use higher-efficiency gas appliances to reduce utility costs. And so we have not heard any indication that this would be problematic for affordable housing over the, because they are obviously very concerned over operational savings over the life of the building for the people that are gonna occupy the building affordably.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Does anyone want to offer any amendments to the, well, we have a, we have a, we have a motion to accept right now, made by Councilmember Nash. So does anyone want to try to make a friendly amendment to the motion? I'm assuming the motion is to accept per, per staff report. Does anyone want to make, try to make a friendly amendment to that? Actually, you need a second, you're making this, okay, or no, go ahead, Councilmember, Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, if we're, if the amendment is about dryers, is, then I, you know, staff in their initial recommendation actually did not have dryers as part of what would be required to be electric. I, actually, I think it was either me or Councilmember Nash suggested that we include that, because I think if we're making the point that the issue that we're facing is pretty alarming and massive, then overall, what we're doing here is kind of minor, in that we're talking about sort of mostly new construction. And while I was willing to grant this preference with regards to natural gas and cooking, I, no one has yet made the argument that their, their clothes really need to be dried by natural gas, and so, and that, that is, is, is better for the way the clothes fill, and so I, I just wasn't willing to accept that, and, and so that's why I was saying, "Let's set aside the issue of natural gas with," I, I accept it with regards to cooking, but in all other usages, I, I didn't see, like, if, if we do accept what, the reasoning behind why we're making this decision, then, then that's where I was on, on that. So just, so just to be clear, I wouldn't myself personally be in, in favor of supporting that amendment. If overall, there was support for that amendment, this motion would still have, have my support, but I just wouldn't specifically support adding the amendment.
Thank you. For clarity, the units would be equipped to, to do either or. So you can either have gas or electric, it would be the resident's choice or the property owner's choice, not the city's. No.
Four.
No, the way it's written right now, it would only be electric. So new construction would only have electric dryers, you could not have a gas dryer.
The wiring would only be in case of the cooktop ranges, where they could be gas and they needed to be wired for electric, but dryers would have to be electric.
So you have a choice on your stove right now, you don't have a choice on the dryer. So, Councilmember Carlton, your light is on?
Nope.
Nope? All right, are there any amendments, or can I have a second?
I, I just wanted to clarify, was that an amendment? I don't...
No, it's not an amendment, that's how the ordinance is currently written.
Oh, okay.
So do we have a second on the motion?
I just want to clarify, to the point about the, the restaurants, I don't want to delay this, because I think it is important we do this. However, I also want to make sure that we do the best job we can while we're here doing it. Is it going to delay if we do put in something like, and if you are, you just gave an example, wood-burning pizza place? Could we write that out so that it doesn't have to go through an appeals process? Are there some low-hanging fruit we can, we can say, you know, "We have considered this, and you don't have to go through the, the extra"? Or is there a reason why you feel they need to go through the appeals process?
I think the appeal process is actually meant to allow for greater discretion than what would be put into a prescriptive code, kind of like goes back to the Constitution and the Bill of Rights argument. If you, if you have a Bill of Rights, people are gonna think that's your only rights.
All right.
And then those who say, "Well, you need a Bill of Rights, so, so that people know you have the rights." So in this circumstance, we said, when we were talking about, we talked about putting in an appeal process. However, I do admit, the appeal process came back a little more prescriptive than I thought under what circumstances it could be appealed. I actually did want to leave it open to discretion of the, of the council and the, and the appellant, because for the very reason that, I mean, excuse me, and the appeal board, for the very reason that you cannot foresee all circumstances, for instance, such as the small business owner who, or, or the, the type of cuisine that I've never heard of before but requires the flame.
So how do we say, artistic or economic? How would you word that?
I think you just leave it open to appeal. You just say it's a, that the, the business, the restaurant has the right of appeal on the issue, and that it would go to the appell, appeal board, and it could be appealed to the city council, and they'd have to make a showing that there'd be, they'd have, Bill, I don't know what the language is, but that they'd have to, there would be, is there language that we probably should be trying to do a lot of discretion?
I mean, I think the language that's in there, you know, it's a, so there's a business-related reason to cook with a flame.
That's fine, that's good, yeah.
This need cannot be reasonably achieved with an electric fuel source. So combining those two, so it's for aesthetic, it's for flavor, it's for taste, I mean, I, I think there's adequate discretion, and then there is an appeal to the city council.
All right, so, but the, the discussion of the types of, of businesses won't have bearing on the language, it's the, that language is, is set. Ms. Fotu referenced some language about wood, about pizza place, et cetera.
That, that's in here as an example?
It's an, it's just an example, though, it's not, it's not limited.
Yeah, so these are, examples include, so it, it's intended to show the kinds of uses that might apply. Again, ultimately, it can be appealed to the city council, so ultimately, it comes back to you for deciding what it means.
So everyone, everyone's outside with that?
Just to be, to be clear, I'm just concerned that we want a variety of different types of food, different restaurants, we want to be welcoming, because this is the thing we're talking about with vibrancy, and I don't want to do something that inhibits someone's ability from bringing a great new restaurant into our city. I think it's really important to give them that choice. And you're right, I think, even getting prescriptive, like, and it can't be done with electricity, because the, the problem, and this is where we go back and forth, on one hand, yeah, we want to have that freedom, on the other hand, then you have a problem with one group of people on this commission turns something down where another group would approve it, and it gets down to the, to the individuals. So I guess if it doesn't work, we can bring this back. When would this be back for, for review? In two years?
About two years.
So if it doesn't work, we have the ability to bring this back and, and revisit this if it's causing problems? Because I, I don't like restricting people's ability to provide something that's great for our community. Okay?
All right, do I have a, I think we're there? Do I have a second on the motion? Got a second from Councilmember Combs?
I have, I have one clarifying question.
Yes.
So people have the right to choose at home, but they don't have the right to choose in restaurants? For their stove?
That's right. In restaurants, in, well, in restaurants? In new, in new building construction restaurants, people would need to go through an appeal.
I still, really? Okay. Why? Why are we restricting restaurants and not homes?
Because we've got a huge climate crisis on our hands.
No, I, I agree.
Presumably, the, presumably, the gas stop stove is on for a much longer period of time.
At a restaurant?
In a restaurant.
All right, fair enough. Thank you for answering my question.
Yeah, so over a duration time. But that being said, there is an appeal process if there's something about the restaurant that would require the stove, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead now and move on to the next item, which is item G1, reconsideration of Resolution Number 6512, establishing a process for notifying the city council and public of final planning commission actions to facilitate city council review of large or impactful development projects. And there's no staff presentation, this is Mayor Protem Taylor's motion for reconsideration, so I'm gonna turn the mic over to her. mic over to her.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. Just going back to June 11th, when there was the request for the moratorium, and at that time, there were some tools that were put in front of us to look at large and impactful projects, and specifically in District One. I believe the majority of the projects on the books are at a bonus level. And I believe that some of those wouldn't have come before council unless we had this resolution. Then when the resolution came back to the council, ended up turning into just an email. So I asked for a reconsideration.
Okay, so my understanding is it's not just an email. So one council member, so what happens is in this process is that the council, what would happen in this process is that the, the, there's the planning commission decision, the city council is notified, and then based on one city council member exercising an appeal right, it would then come to the city council. So it is a substantial change in how we see things now, whereas if a city council member wanted to take something up, they'd have to convince the council to take it up. Rather, in this circumstance, it just takes one council member to say, I want the council to review this. I think that's a pretty substantial, and I think, and I think it's actually, I think it'd be hard pressed for us to do more than that because we'd be reviewing, we'd have to add quite a few more council meetings. We'd have to be asking staff to prepare reports for things we wouldn't, no one may even want to see. The dollar spent on that would be diverted from other, other things that we would much prefer staff to be doing. And I think the fact that it just takes one, it just takes one to say, there's something in this project that I want to see it. So I understand the concern that if it was, if I would, I hear your concern, if it was just an email and then you had to convince two colleagues or three colleagues and then, and then it had to come to the council and we had to decide we wanted to see it, I'd understand the concern. Because all it takes is just one of us to say, I want the city council to review it, I think that's a shift. And it doesn't require, if we were to do more than that, I think we'd be really getting into looking at a sort of, we'd be looking at state policy around land use really and what the role is of a planning commission. So the, you know, state law sets forth what planning commissions look at and what they do. And so we'd be really sort of rewriting that regulation to say, well, the city council looks at everything and the planning commission's a cursory body. And so I think this is, I think this is, I think this is actually a really good, strong way to preserve what you're concerned about. You're going to, if you see something and you want to see it, you can independently say you want to see it and we will all look at it. But if no one on the, if we all get the email and no one on the council wants to look at it, we save staff and everybody all that time. Does that, does that sort of answer the concern?
I still disagree. And just looking at what's happening in District One and the number of projects that are active, I believe we have, I don't know, four or five EIR circulating, which is quite a bit. And when we talk about reach close, climate change, there's no air quality monitoring currently there, I'm very concerned. And I need to have resources and tools that will help protect the existing community and also having enough input on what's happening there. And so...
Councilmember Nash?
No, sorry.
They're fighting over who goes first. Councilmember Combs.
Sure. I just want to first make sure I understand the process here. So right now we're considering whether to reconsider. And there will be, if, if council member, Mayor Protem Taylor, if there's someone who supports that, or maybe she makes the motion and someone supports it, then that's a decision of whether we would reconsider it. And then, and then the recon, the actual sort of reconsidering is different, or is this a real reconsidering in this moment?
We need three votes to decide to put it back on the council for reconsideration.
Okay, so this is, this is not then a substantive decision here. This is about whether it gets reconsidered. Okay, totally fair.
Can I, can I just interject, though? You can, if once you voted to reconsider, you can have a substantive discussion and, and make a substantive decision tonight, or you can schedule it for another meeting.
Okay, totally fair. I appreciate it. So I want to chime in in support of Mayor Protem Taylor's effort to bring this back before the council. I hear everything that the mayor is saying and it's completely valid and I can't disagree. Where I'm coming from is that to the Mayor Protem's point, we started this process off with a discussion about a moratorium, which was, of which the impacts were going to be very clear and substantive. And as part of, you know, stepping away from, from that, we looked into the formation of two subcommittees and the implementation of this process by which the council would get a notice of planning commission decisions that fell within certain parameters. As we all know, the, for a variety of reasons, the subcommittees haven't to this point produced much. And so the thing that is out there is this element of additional sort of review. And it is to this point, you know, an email. And I don't know that for me that that is enough. It's an, that it is enough that just one member of council can bring it, one member of the city council can bring it before. Because I think I want to put all stakeholders on notice that for their projects that fall within certain parameters, it will definitely come before council. I want it to be something that is a default understanding of all parties involved, that this is something that's going to go before council because then again, like I said, it speaks to, from what I was hearing, what I have heard is that this is the issue. This is the most substantive issue for a lot of residents that the council's taking up, having, or that the city is dealing with, having to do with development. And again, like I said, at the time, I think it makes sense that the elected representatives of the community, by default, will have, will have a say in that. And so, in that sense, that's why I've come to, you know, this opinion that I understand it, but the email and that that's a change, but I want everyone to know that council will take it up. And it isn't going to be dependent on one person making a decision to bring it up, but that everyone will know that it's going to come. And I have to say that one of the counterarguments is staff time, and it's just not one for me that resonates. We've had, somewhat recently, at least two projects that were initially reviewed and voted on by the planning commission and then made their way to council. There was recently the Stanford Motor Inn project, and before that there was Forte Middlefield. I don't think that the staff presentation changed much from the planning commission stage to the city council stage. And so for me, unless, and I haven't seen it, unless someone wants to produce for me an actual sort of log of hours, and that that log shows a substantive difference between what needed to go in from the preparation of an agenda item from the planning commission to, to, to city council, then I can't accept that there is going to be some substantive increase in staff hours between that. So that counterargument doesn't resonate with me. And so again, then I'm left with the issue of that, back to the, this is the substantive issue, a major issue that people in the community are concerned with. And I think that all stakeholders should be, by default, be on notice that it is something that, that they will have to present and will be reviewed by the city council.
It's, so I'm hearing what you guys are saying. It's, I mean, candidly, it's odd for me that, that all of the council members would possess the discretion to say, I want the council to look at it. And we would say, why? And that doesn't put everybody on notice that only one council member can say, we want to look at it. Like, I, I understand that we want to give that message to the community that we're taking their concerns seriously, but I think, I think that it is, I'm not sure, I guess I'm not following why what we're doing doesn't give that message to the community, that one council member exercising their discretion of appeal is enough to say to the community that we are looking at this closely, that we are looking at all the projects closely, they are coming to us every time, and the only way we won't look at it is if, is if none of the council members think it's important enough to put in front of us right now. I mean, that's really what it is. If, with the way it's been proposed now, the only way we're not going to see it is if all of us look at it and say, there's no need to see it by not taking it in action. So I don't think we're sending them, I don't think we're saying to the community, we're not taking it seriously, and I don't think we're not putting builders on notice doing it this way. I think what we're doing is saving us the time and staff that, and staff that amount of time of putting things in front of us that frankly, none of us would have exercised that, that right of appeal on. Councilmember Nash?
I've been attending numerous planning commission meetings recently, and I've been very pleased at how they've really, well, actually, I had not attended many meetings before we had the moratorium discussion, but certainly since, they've been right in sync with what, where I think the council would be. And so I'm not sure what the benefit of having, having it automatically go to council would be when in fact, I believe that the planning commission in most cases will be following the councils, will be in sync with council, and that the best use of council's time and staff's time would actually be to further work on the zoning, which is where I think we have a tremendous amount of work to do. And if in fact, the planning commission is not following the zoning that we are proposing, then we can have the, we have the ability to appeal it to council. But I think that many cases, I would think in most cases, the planning commission is actually right in sync with the council, and especially after this discussion again. And we may not need to hear these, these planning reviews. And in fact, that will give all of us more bandwidth to be able to do what we really need to do, which is to review the zoning that is currently, that currently exists.
Councilmember Carlton?
Basically, what this does is it gives us the option of not having to look at something that all of us don't want to look at. If anybody wants to look at something, we look at it. If all of us don't want to look at it, it gives us the option of not having to. Otherwise, it's obligatory to fill our space. As I said, there's an opportunity cost on other things you could be focusing on. So I agree with you guys.
And just so it's clear, guys, it does, like, in doing the agenda with city staff, well, like, we added meetings this year. We've added a number of meetings. And we do, yeah, we do add, I mean, this is just, just more to be added. And I have a list of, we have a list, and you know this, Councilmember Taylor, we have a list of, I don't know, it looks like 15 items that still don't have a home on a city council meeting yet that we have to figure out when they're going to show up on a city council agenda and work with staff to get those items done. So while it may not seem like, okay, well, it's just a couple of their items, it adds up, like it compiles on. Now, that being said, if you guys are dead set on wanting to do this, I have been in the position of wanting a reconsideration hearing and not being granted it. And I will, I will, as a courtesy, allow you guys to like, we can have the reconsideration hearing on it, but I just don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't trust ourselves to make the, make the appeal. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I would just add that, first of all, we're, we're talking about a select number of projects that are in bonus and that for the most part, we will see with regards to this. And so my concern and part of what I'm addressing is, is not the idea of putting the onus on, on one council member, right? And whatever repercussions might come from one council member filling that they have to be the person that, that signals the review. And that we as a council made a determination that things that fell within a certain, you know, fell within certain parameters, larger projects. Again, we are talking about large projects, you know. So large projects in, you know, a 35,000 population city, some people could say should always go to the city council. I mean, there is, there's that argument. So, and so, in that sense, again, I don't think it should be something where it's an email and one member of the city council has to fill some onus of making that decision. I think it should be by default that all of us have made the decision that, yeah, this is something that we should be seeing. And I do think it corrects action that I think was a mistake in this specific plan. And again, I'm a member, I was a member of the planning commission for six years, and I know the quality and caliber of the people who serve on the, on the planning commission. But I do think that, and you don't just see it and have not just seen it in Menlo Park, but when you take these situations of large developments and when you move it off of the council making the decision, making the final decision to the planning commission making the final decision, I fundamentally think it is a mistake.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that we're talking about, like, I think the very large developments we see, there's a size that's falls within the subset. I'm not sure, we'll go over that when we have the reconsideration hearing, but it sounds like people aren't going to move off their position. So as a courtesy, I'm just going to say, let's go ahead and reschedule if everyone's in agreement. We can schedule a reconsideration hearing on, on the matter.
Sorry?
No, whoops. Wow, my pen jumped. I'm sorry about that. So, but yeah, I mean, I can tell that my, my colleagues are passionate about this, and so I'm fine with moving to the next step of actually having the reconsideration hearing. However, I don't want to do it tonight. Have that reconsideration tonight. I want to put it on a meeting and give people notice that we're actually reconsidering the issue as, as it was set, so.
So, I mean...
Councilmember Carlton?
Thank you. I've been in the position where I wanted to bring something back and wasn't able to as well. We both have. And I totally respect your reasons for wanting to bring it back. I think it's going to be a waste of time, and I don't want to keep filling our agenda with this. I think what we have works. All it does is give us the option of not having to review something that we don't want to. And I don't think anyone on council in the history of Menlo Park has ever been so shy that they didn't feel confident putting anything they wanted on the agenda. If any development comes up, any one of us can put it on. And I don't think that's an onus by any stretches of the imagination. All it does is give us the option of not having, not being obliged to review things. And I don't want to, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse on this. I feel like what we have works and I'm not going to change the way I vote. And we can talk about it for another hour, another day if we want to, but why? I mean, and I know that, and I don't mean that to sound terrible, because I've been there and I know that frustration, but in a way, it was kind of cruel, to be kind, I guess, in a way, in the sense that they didn't raise my expectations and drag me through, and then we end up where we started from in the first place. And so that's, that's my only concern in reviewing this again.
I'm even more so in favor of reviewing it again. I mean, I say, let's have the debate again, even if the result is that, that there isn't a majority, then I can go out to the community and I can say, hey, I said that the city council should by default be the main decision maker in these major development decisions. I do feel that the city council should be obliged to take up major development issues. I feel that there should be an obligation there, and I don't think it should be an email. I don't think it should be based on one person making a decision in the moment that, oh, yeah, I think this is something worth considering. I do think that there should be an obligation there. And so if we have the vote again, and, and it's, it's a loss then, then I do think having that, that debate, and I can go to the community and I can say, yeah, I fought this as far as was possible and made sure that I thought that, that the city council was the last decision maker.
I think you just said it and put it on record.
So guys, so I'm concerned we're starting to soapbox a little bit, and we've been real good about not doing that as a council to each other. I think we do need to go ahead and have this brought back on an agenda, and I think that we need to have the description of what these projects look like clearly defined, both for, by staff for the reconsideration hearing. I think that this is getting passionate and all, like, everyone's getting passionate about this, and I think we actually are all in the same spot of what we're trying to accomplish here. When we're talking about whether one council can exercise an individual appeal and bring it back, whether it comes back automatically, that's not a big, huge That's not a big, huge policy difference, but we're starting to get a little passionate about, about what that difference may imply. And so, for that reason, I do think it's important that we bring it back for reconsideration hearing, properly briefed by staff as to what this actually is we're talking about, so that soundbites are properly characterized, and people can look at it and know what we are talking about. So, if someone wants to make the motion for reconsideration, I'm prepared to go ahead and vote for it.
Councilmember Nash?
I just want to state that we did decide, I believe, on a six-month trial basis for the, this, the procedure of the, with the emails, and I would propose that we try it for six months, although we may not have any projects coming forward, but at least we go through one, one bout of this, where we get the email and we see what it's like before we actually reconsider.
Is that a substitute motion or a comment?
Can we, let's have that, can we? Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just, well, let's have that discussion on the night of the reconsideration hearing.
Yeah, I would just, I would just, I do appreciate it, Councilmember Nash. I would say that, like, I know that, that it would be, it would be something a council member would decide to bring to the council, so I don't know that it would appropriately sort of test whether it was a, a good idea to have it as, as a default or not. But I do appreciate that, that, you know, what you're offering.
But speaking directly, let's just talk directly to each other, as the colleagues we are, like, do you guys really think that the case could be made to the public, that it's a huge policy difference to say, one council member can bring something on appeal as opposed to all of them will come to the council regardless of whether or not any council member said they wanted to see it? Because that is such a huge thing, that someone in the city is going to say, well, man, those people who didn't want that really were exercising some sort of radical discretion, because I don't think we're all that far from each other in what we're trying to accomplish here.
Councilmember Nash?
Well, again, I would say that I believe that the Planning Commission will probably have very similar decisions to what we would make, so what we will be doing is avoiding reviews when, when we agree with the Planning Commission's decision.
So, so, I would just want, what I think is smart is, I think for us to, I think what would be, makes sense, because I know people aren't going to move off their positions, is that people just consider the arguments that we've made tonight, and that we come back to it, and maybe people, maybe it's exactly where we, we are at the reconsideration hearing, but I would like it, because it has been a more passionate discussion than I expected, that it be well briefed, and that people know what we're, what we're talking about at the time we vote for it. So, we have a motion from Mayor Protem Taylor, second by Councilmember Combs, so I'm going to go ahead and-
I have a question for, for McClure.
Yes.
And again, I do this respectfully, I'm really not attacking you, I swear. I, I just want to make sure. When we've, I've tried to bring something back before, and it wasn't the next meeting, and I was told tough. Why is this different?
So, it depends on the nature of the action that the council's taking. This is a policy, it's a council policy. You can revisit it every week if you want to, because it's a policy. If it's the approval of a project where, or some other type of action where there's been reliance on the approval, or it, it has to do with a development project, something has already been, you know, authorized money to be spent, or something, and moving forward, then there's that timeliness, there's the due process issue of having to bring it back very quickly before somebody acts on whatever the action was. But, again, because this is a council policy about how things should be treated, you could literally bring this up a month later, two months later, six months later, go back and just rescind the resolution, because there's no detrimental reliance on the action.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand the process, I wasn't attacking the situation here.
Yeah, and just so too, so people know, because I want to make sure the record's accurate. There was, with respect to how fruitful the subcommittees have been, they're actually, I feel like our subcommittee has accomplished a lot. We just actually did meet with staff and talked about, there is a meeting upcoming that you guys will soon see on the forward calendar, which is going to be a review to direct staff with respect to specific zoning issues in the city that we just talked about last week, I mean, just talked about this past Tuesday with Mr. Pogueras, where the subcommittees will be hopefully providing their reports for that meeting, and we'll be wrapping up the subcommittees. So, I know I've talked with Mayor Protem Taylor about that, and we tend, tend, what the hope is that, coming out of that study session, we will be setting the council up very well for going into the next year with respect to making mecha recommendations coming out of that study session. And so, so, but I do feel like the, the outreach that we've done in, in District One and our subcommittee has actually been very fruitful, and there are actually some specific fruits that are about to come, that should be coming forward soon from, from our interactions with stakeholders that will be greatly beneficial to the city. So, I did want to correct that and not leave that, that as like a hanging chad out there. If we could go ahead and vote, that'd be great.
The motion passes four to one with Councilmember Nash dissenting.
Okay. Ms.-
My apologies. Councilmember Carlton dissenting.
I have to use the facility, so let's go into break. Mr. Mayor, before we break, I just want to just advise the council that, looking at the tentative agenda, and of course, we work on this with the mayor and the, and Mayor Protem every week, it looks like this item, unless we reprioritize some of our work, will likely come back on November 19th to the council. That'll give us time to prepare the recommendations, as well as provide adequate public notice.
All right, let's go ahead and sit down. We'll talk about in the next forward meeting whether or not there's any Planning Commission items that would be affected by it, and if so, we may have to move things around on the agenda, which we're so apt to do in order to make things fit. So, let's go ahead and take that five-minute break. We're going to go ahead and bring this meeting back to order.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just provide a follow-up info announcement to the last agenda item.
Sure.
So, you did mention, as part of the deliberation, that we are scheduling, staff is working to pull together a study session for the city council to review housing element laws, and both at the state law, now that, you know, once we have all the, the, everything settled in Sacramento, on November 5th. And so, at that meeting, we hope to provide the context of the current housing element, the outcome of state law as it stands in October, and then what we anticipate for the housing element in 2022. We will be working, staff will be contact, in contact with the subcommittees to schedule times to begin to formulate recommendations that can then be discussed by the full council as part of that study session, and as the mayor mentioned earlier, really set the stage for goal-setting in 2020 as we move into that process.
So, we discussed this week that specific zoning recommendations could be gone over in that meeting and discussed, both with respect to both subcommittees, and then also we'll be taking up discussion, and I'm not sure if we'll do it in, in that one, but if we can fit it in, we talked about, also talking about the overall zoning changes, that we'd be inclusive of that, so, of the, the subcommittee work. Councilmember Nash?
I am just concerned that our subcommittee has not done any outreach at this point. I did not realize that was part of this, what was happening at this stage.
Totally up to you guys how you want to handle your subcommittee. We, we've done outreach, because Mayor Protem Taylor is very excellent at, at organizing outreach for us to do.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move now, thank you. We're going to move on to item G1, reconsideration of resolution number 6512. Oh, sorry, that's not the right one. We're moving on to G2, introduction of ordinance number 1058, adopting a local minimum wage ordinance effective January 1st, 2020. And at this time, we have a staff report from Assistant City Manager Nick Pogueras. I think that's right.
Yes.
I'm off script, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Nick Pogueras, Assistant City Manager. I'm exciting, I'm excited this evening to present to you the proposed local minimum wage ordinance, just by way of an executive summary. This is the first, this is the introduction of the ordinance. If the council approves the ordinance this evening, we will come forward on the 24th with a second reading. Just key elements of the ordinance, we have areas for, that, that we'll discuss this evening in the presentation. The ordinance includes applicability, or who, to whom the ordinance applies, on the employee side, and employees defined as anyone working in the recommended ordinance, anyone working longer than 20 hours per week, or 10 hours per week. On the employer side, the definition is anyone who has a business license, and to hopefully help make it a little more understandable, basically, the folks who are issuing the W2s to the employee. So, those are the individuals who would be held accountable. And then finally, as I will discuss in a few moments here, there is a wage that is allowed under California state law that would apply to individuals who are learning their role, and only for the first 160 hours. The ordinance contains a $15 per hour minimum wage effective January 1 of 2020, and applies to all employers. In addition, the ordinance provides an annual inflation adjustment beginning January 1 of 2020. It's tied to the Consumer Price Index for the San Francisco-Oakland-Hayward region, as measured by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and the, the ordinance recommends a 3% annual cap. And then finally, the ordinance provides the city council the authority to issue a temporary suspension of the inflation adjustments with no retroactivity. So, in the event of an economic downturn, should the city council feel a pressing need to, to hold the minimum wage at the rate that was in place, the council has the authority to do that, but the wage cannot be decreased. Just for some context, timeline, this item has been on the city council work plan, originally added in February of 2018, has bounced around a little bit due to staff, due to, due to competing priorities and staff bandwidth. It was added again this, this work plan session, 2019-20. The city council has heard this item on two occasions. First was on, in May of 2019, where the council gave direction on key elements such as the hourly rate. On June, in June of 2019, the council received a draft ordinance, as well as a draft engagement plan, and then the council gave direction to increase city-paid employees, the wages that are paid to those employees who earned, who were earning less than $15 per hour. Those employees were brought up to $15 per hour effective July of 2019. We have engaged in a very, in, in a community outreach process. We've, as mentioned in the staff report, we've outreach to several nonprofits, we've had a couple of conversations with the Chamber of Commerce, and we held a community meeting in, in August. Just, again, as a little background, the state minimum wage, hourly minimum wage is set to reach either, $15 either by 2022 or 2023, depending on the employer's size. For more than 20, an employer with more than 25 employees, the, you'll see the graduated scale there, and then for employers with 25 or fewer, you'll see the grad, yeah, you'll see the graduated scale there. The, I left out the middle years there, but I, I hope that you, it's, it's provided to demonstrate the, the phased-in increase. The state minimum wage law provides for an annual CPI adjustment of 3.5, capped at 3.5%. One of the elements that we'll talk about soon here is that that 3.5% is tied to the national average CPI, not necessarily any, any region, and, and there is a significant difference, as we'll, we'll see here in a moment. To provide context of the, of what other agencies have done, neighboring agencies, you'll see here the hourly minimum wage in effect on January 1 of 2020. A number of agencies are already at $15, and several are planning, or have provisions in their ordinances to provide CPI adjustments, however, they have not been, they have not necessarily released those new wages. That's the middle column, or the second from the, from the left column there. The next column over is the cap on inflation adjustments that are provided by the ordinances in those agencies, and then finally, a disclosure of whether those agencies have learner's wages, which are elements of the proposed minimum wage ordinance for Menlo Park. So, just to quickly summarize the community input, impact on small businesses, we've had several phone calls, emails, as well as a community meeting to collect input from small business owners, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. We've heard that there's a significant concern by restaurateurs that the minimum wage will create a challenge in how they run their business by way of individuals who earn tips. One restaurant gave us the example of having effectively two different wage scales, one for the waitstaff, which would receive the minimum wage plus tips that are collected, which results in an effective hourly wage that's much higher than $15 per hour, and then the, the staff and their organization that do not have the ability to earn tips are paid at a, are currently paid at a rate higher than $15 per hour, and they just express the concern that if the need, if there is a need to increase the waitstaff's minimum wage, $15 an hour plus tips, that that would put pressure on their business for their back office, or their backroom staff. Additionally, we heard feedback that there's a concern about defining an employee as anyone who works two hours per week. That was in the original draft ordinance, and we'll talk about that here a little bit. We heard feedback that import tariffs, which are being imposed slowly, but, but in some cases, surely, and the inability for organizations to pass on those, those increased costs to their customers, the effect that that might have driving customers to online retailers. And then finally, the absence of a phase-in over two-year, or two or more years. As you may recall from the earlier slide, the state of California has impact, has, has an implementation schedule, the phases in the $15 per hour over several years are, the proposed minimum wage ordinance for Menlo Park would take effect January 1 of 2020, and would be, would set at $15. There's also impact on employees that, that was, the feedback that was received. The first is that the proposed ordinance that has a recommendation of defining an employee as working 10 hours per week or more, that that creates the opportunity for, or has, can have a negative impact on how that employee is scheduled, that employers may need to schedule employees to work less, and it also creates the opportunity for, creates an administrative burden for organizations to track, to make sure that they're compensating employees appropriately. The feeling here is that a two-hour wage is low enough that it basically applies to everybody, whereas a 10-hour wage gets, 10-hour requirement really does get into significant monitoring. Additionally, as you may recall from the earlier slide, if approved, the recommendation would provide for the lowest CPI adjustment in, of any of the agencies in the area. The state is set at 3.5%. Many of the Santa Clara County cities are at 5%, and some cities don't, do not have any cap. And then finally, some, some concerns that were heard was that, or that learner's wages are difficult to monitor and enforce, and that's an understandable concern. You have somebody who has never, let's say, operated a cash register. The employer may provide a learner's wage for the first 160 hours per, of work. However, there may be that that employee has cashier experience in another organization, so there's an opportunity for there to be some miscommunication, some challenges in enforcing that. And then finally, we did make three outreaches to a list of nonprofits, and we did not hear any feedback relative to the impact of this on their organizations. I'm going to come back to that slide. So, one thing I want to point out is that with regard to the rate of inflation, you have three lines here. This is the change, this is the rate of inflation, so this is the change in the Consumer Price Index measured from February to February. So, the, so the first point on the graph is the change in the Consumer Price Index from February of 2009 to February of 2010. And then we have, the, the measurements are provided every two months, so we have April, February, April, and June provided here. What you see, what you'll see is that there's a significant, there is some volatility, volatility in- in this particular measurement. If set at 3%, you'll see here that all but the last, in the last 10 years, there are three years where the CPI for the San Francisco Oakland Hayward area exceeded 3%. And then if we just, if we look at, so that's on the state level, or that's on the local level. If we just look at the change in Consumer Price Index, I added here the national averages at the state level, you'll see that the, the level that is in the state code of 3.5% is considerably, is considerably, or 3.5% the line's just off just a bit, is, is lower than what, than what would otherwise be applicable in this area. So you'll, you'll note there that nationally, the CPI went basically, it was actually negative in 2015. It was negative points, 0.6%. But for this, for these purposes, we show it as zero. And then it slowly moved up the next year and then there was a significant increase in 2017. So I'm just going to go back here to how the inflation adjusted minimum wage rate would work. So here we have a chart that outlines the state's minimum wage. It starts at $11 for employers of 25 or few, for 25 or fewer employees. It graduates up to 2023 to $15 per hour. And then there's a CPI adjustment of 3.5% that's assumed here. So this is the maximum CPI adjustment, as I showed in the slide just before. Over the past 10 years, the state, the index that the state is using has never reached or exceeded, has never exceeded 3%. So this is an optimistic growth factor. When we look at the proposed local minimum wage, we start with $15 in 2020 and then we increase 3% over the next several years and you'll see the cumulative effect of that adjustment. What, if the, and while history may be no indicator of future performance, what we can expect to see based on the CPI graphs that I showed earlier is that the state minimum wage will grow slower than, or at a most, more slowly rate, slower rate than the proposed local minimum wage for Menlo Park at 3% because we're using different indexes. So, next steps. After this hearing, the, we will schedule the second reading for September 24th as a consent agenda item, as amended by the council if amended this evening. We will pursue contract enforcement of the ordinance. The City of San Jose provides contract enforcement for a number of agencies and we'll be working with them to secure that service. And then finally, in November and December this year, we'll provide the necessary announcements and notices to employers to advise them of the city councils, of the new local minimum wage ordinance. So just to recap, the key elements this evening, should the council decide to make changes to the proposed ordinance, we have applicability. Again, this is the definition of an employer, an employee or employer. We have the code sections there if you'd like to modify those. We have the rate and annual adjustments. Again, the code sections there and then the exemptions. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brigeroth before we take public comment? All right, let's go ahead then and move to public comment. Our first public speaker this evening is Raina Lehman.
I'm very excited to be at this point in the discussion of a minimum wage ordinance for our city. Honorable mayor, council members, I'm Raina Lehman on behalf of the Labor Council and a Menlo Park resident for decades. The impetus for discussing the minimum wage ordinance for our city recognized our high cost of living, the difficulties in attracting and retaining workforce, and a desire to be part of the solution in reducing, in reducing rampant economic inequality and enhancing economic stability in our city. Many, many hours have been spent researching, discussing and debating. On behalf of the Labor Council, our community partners, we support adoption of a minimum wage ordinance in Menlo Park that raises the minimum wage to $15 an hour on January 1st, 2020, that provides the annual CPI increase as recommended in the staff report, and without any further delays and applied equally to all businesses. On behalf of the Labor Council, we strongly support retaining the current definition of employee, extending the minimum wage to all who work two or more hours per week, which is also the definition used by the five other cities and the county who have already adopted minimum wage ordinances. The two-hour definition pretty much assures that all workers will be covered by the ordinance, which is the intent of passing an ordinance. It's easy for employers and employees to track. Please reject any modification of this definition. Two weeks ago, I was at the South San Francisco City Council meeting where they voted 5 to 0 to enact their minimum wage ordinance, similarly $15 an hour by January 1st, 2020. Recognizing as all cities have, the ordinance will have impacts on businesses, but there's a greater good for the city, its businesses and its workers. San Carlos and Milbrae are taking this up next. We know that not all sp, small businesses in the city are struggling. We know that most city businesses already pay $15 an hour to attract and retain a workforce. One small local retail business owner told me she happily pays over $15 an hour. There are always forces impacting business. We know that. But minimum wage ordinance history shows that healthy businesses adapt and adjust. I don't know anyone who works that is not reliant on income for their daily needs. This speaks to shift work, working shorter hours, and it says to me that generally people need to work more than one job to make ends meet. So thank you for your thoughtful consideration. I have really appreciated being on this journey with you and I look forward to the ordinance being passed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Anna Chow.
My name is Anna Chow and along with my husband Dexter, I'm the owner of Cheeky Monkey Toys in downtown Menlo Park. We're also residents of Suburban Park. I, we completely agree that the challenge of addressing the high cost of living in Menlo Park and the surrounding area is incredibly pressing, but the repercussions of the, of a potential 35% increase in wages with just three months to plan would have a significant negative impact on our business. I'm here to ask you to vote no on this ordinance. We believe that phasing in the minimum wage increases, like it's done in Calif, the state of California, is a better way for us to be able to plan. Menlo Park's proposed ordinance would mean an increase from $11 an hour for small businesses to $15 an hour, again with only three months to plan. It just isn't about increasing the wage of those making less than $15 an hour. It also means across the board raises for our entire staff so that we can ensure equity of pay based on job responsibilities, experience and length of employment. As a side note, our only employees making less than $15 an hour are students working part-time. In addition, there are expenses that rise as payroll rises, such as workman's compensation insurance. Our current workman's comp insurance has already risen 70, that's 7-0% in the last five years. If this ordinance were to pass, there's two ways for us to compensate for it, either rising, raising prices or cutting expenses. The first, if we were to raise our prices, it would be very difficult due to price pressures from online retailers and mass market stores, not to mention the financial impact of our customers. We are also experiencing up to 20% price increases on some of our products due to the tariffs on goods made in China and additional products are scheduled to be impacted in December. The other option is cut expenses, which means cutting benefits for employees like health insurance. It could also mean hiring fewer people. It could also mean getting rid of, of the beloved service of gift wrapping, which would be quite a stir in Menlo Park, I think. Either of these options would decrease our sales and put us in a precarious financial position. So I would like you to strongly con surge, consider phasing in the minimum wage. It's not that we don't think it's important, it's just we need time to make sure that we can support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Josh Becker.
Thank you very much, Josh Becker. I served on the State Workforce Board, I was a downtown business owner for many years. I'm here to support the ordinance, I'd say on this initiative, on the reach codes, we're talking about Menlo Park very much leading the way for the area, whereas here, this is an instance where I think we're lagging behind some other cities to do so. I try to always support local businesses and very, you know, and, and concerned about the effect of local businesses. I always love when I'm at a restaurant and we have a chance to pay and it says, hey, we rate, this is the price we pay because we're supporting local workers. So we do know that the, the average rents in Menlo Park are closer to $45,000 a year and $15 an hour is, is about $31,200 a year. So I'm here to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Karen Grove.
So I want to echo everything that Josh just said and I want to really emphasize that we keep the definition of an employee at two hours a week. You know, as you know, I'm on the housing commissions, my big passion. If someone's struggling to pay the rent, they're going to take nine hours a week. And of all people, they should be paid minimum wage and not lower. So I really think it's sort of introducing a little bit of monkey business. If you raise it above the two hours, which is what all the other cities are doing, it just seems like an invitation to sort of just make it complicated and therefore difficult and hard to enforce. So I'm, I feel really strongly about that. I also think we've waited long enough and this has been a conversation that's been going on for months and I don't think we need to delay. I don't understand why we're capping the CPI. CPI is what it is. Prices go up, workers at the lower end of the scale need to be paid more. So I would suggest we not cap it or at least don't have a lower cap than the state. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Brandeen.
Good evening and thank you, Brandeen, Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce supports the spirit in which the proposed local ordinance, wage ordinance was brought forward by council. We participated in several meetings with city staff and performed outreach to our members of all employee size, location and types of business. In general, everyone supports the efforts placed toward correcting a problem that exists in the Bay Area. But no, this is not a panacea to the problems that exist. From an employee perspective, it's wages, affordable housing, effective transportation. From an employer perspective, it includes available workforce, employee housing, transportation and lease costs. Before you this evening is the proposed local minimum wage ordinance, which begins to address one segment. Although conceptual support is positive from all of our outreach, we comment on the following here and have in previous meetings. The first being timing of the implementation being insufficient for notification and planning. Originally, staff recommended a transition period with an effective date of January 1st, 2021, which we supported. We agree with the current timing, but ask council give consideration to some following points. One being the size of an employee base. Apply a stepped approach so that smaller businesses, perhaps those with fewer employees, may adapt to the implementation. The market will dictate rate, they are going to be paying minimum wage. However, consideration for the small independent business and their budgeting process allows them to catch up. Another point is that we support the definition of the employee minimum wage threshold of 10 hours. This is not a move to circumvent implementation of wage, of minimum wage, but it is a way to address occasional need to complement a permanent employee base, providing a temporary bridge. And we look at that only as a temporary bridge, not as reducing a wage. We would like to, and I am requesting clarification or definition, on the basis of the learner wage provision, and I may be off on this, but with a suggestive 85% rule, is it the intent that currently with a larger, with larger employees, so the, the wage of the state is 13 versus a lower wage for smaller business, is it the intent that the CPI adjustment for all in, for the wage in Menlo Park could dip below the minimum wage? And I'm only highlighting that because I want to make sure that even with a learner wage, we never go below the state wage. So that's just a flag. And then finally, a question on legal wage is support tip credit. Can restaurants add a line item to a bill to offset what might be considered a tip credit practice, which I believe our assistant city attorney has indicated is not legal? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Rollison.
My first comment is, where is Andrew Boone? I'm just surprised he's not here. And then when I thought, where's Andrew Boone, I thought, God, he's been talking about this forever. So I think it's really exciting that you're at this stage in the development and I'm just here to support it and say let's get it done. I like the two hours, not the 10 hours for all the loophole reasons that have already been discussed and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Diane Bailey.
Diane Bailey here as a person. I just wanted to express strong support for the ordinance and hope that it could be extended to everyone and thanks so much for taking up this important issue.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that's all over public comment cards. Did I miss anyone? Mr. Conway, did you want to speak this evening?
I did.
Awesome. So another comments, bring it up to council, four questions for staff. Who wants to go first? Someone want to make a motion? Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion and just add the comment that, Ms. Chow, I, I hear you and I hear your concerns and I, I think they're incredibly valid. I do think though, to the point that some of the other speakers made, we are, we are playing catch-up here. And so, and so for me, that's why I feel comfortable with this, this adoption process. I, I do think that incentive minimum wage at, at $15, we're, we're, we're behind a lot of other municipalities and certainly we're, we're far behind, I think, what, what it, it even gets close to costing to, to live in this area.
And councilmember Nash?
I support what councilmember Combs said. I would like to add a friendly amendment to make it two hours rather than 10 hours.
Councilmember Combs, will you accept the amendment?
I do.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protemp Taylor?
Thank you. My, my concern is about the phasing for smaller businesses. Being more specific, not the 25 employees or less, but the 15 or left, less and having a phasing for them. I think we talked about that earlier, Nick. That's, that's the only thing that I'm, I'm concerned about and also I support the definition of employee at two hours. And also the CPI, just looking at that chart that was up earlier, the number of cities that did not have a cap. And I know that what was recommended based on our forecast is 3%. I'm wondering if we can get closer to 3.5, if we do have a cap. If not, how about not having a cap?
Just real quick, did you want to respond to the, the question about whether or not it's, it's possible to have a step? possible to have a step for small businesses as opposed to other businesses?
The answer, most of the local minimum wage ordinances in the area that I'm familiar with do not have a stepped provision. However, if I'm not, if I remember correctly, San Mateo has some provision for a class of employers. I would turn to the city attorney if that's an amendment that could be made tonight to add implementation of the minimum wage. We'd have to set the rate, so you could, for example, council could say $14 per hour in, on January 1 of 2020 for employers with employees, with 15 or fewer employees. And then January 1 of 2021, raise it to be par with where everyone else is. So that would sort of soften, if the interest of the council is to soften the impact on small business, that's one example, and by no means am I suggesting those numbers. I'm just throwing that out for discussion.
Mr. McClure, is that legal? Can you do that?
Yeah, because it's an introduction, if you give us the specific direction, we can incorporate the language and bring it back for the second reading.
But you can, on the basis of size of the business, create the step?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton?
I support that. My kids sadly are aging out of Cheeky Monkey, but I know Cheeky Monkey is such a critical part of our community in Menlo Park, and using you as a representative sample of the kind of businesses we don't want to burden out of business, and particularly with the smaller businesses. Big businesses, they can handle it. It's the mom-and-pop shops and the places that we love that I worry, and so I would support a step because we, as a city, have seen it, the prices of insurance and other things have gone up so much. I don't think that's a bad thing to work with them to do a step specifically for the smaller businesses. I, the 10-hours thing, I get it. We don't want people to fiddle it, to put someone to nine hours. The reason this came up, as was indicated in the staff report, was concern over somebody walking dogs and babysitters. And if we leave this at two, we're basically inadvertently making it illegal to hire a babysitter under $15. And my kid's 13, she doesn't, I hate to say she doesn't deserve, she doesn't need $15 an hour to walk the neighbor's dog or to babysit. And so, two hours isn't enough for people to go see a movie. So I would actually put forward that we move that to five if we're going to do this, because as I said, people will ignore it, I get that, but why do that? Why not be able to make sure it's a clean ordinance that allows people to have the odd babysitter or dog walker on date night and not feel that they're somehow thwarting the law? I don't know your thoughts about that.
So this question was raised, I believe, in the community meeting, a question regarding enforcement. How would we know if the employer is paying the appropriate wage? And really, I think the element goes back to a statement I made earlier where the ordinance defines the, puts the burden on sort of the business license holder. So, you know, in the event that, most folks I don't believe, although perhaps they should, most folks perhaps do not secure business licenses for, you know, for the two-hour babysitter.
Well, I say that because the last time we had this conversation, Mr. McClure said it actually does cover babysitting and dog walking.
I mean, if they're an employee, I would point out that I think it's illegal to hire a 13-year-old in California, under California labor laws, but...
Actually, I think there is an under X many hours thing, but anyway.
I think it's like at 15 instead of 13, but...
All right.
Councilmember Combs?
I pay my babysitter more than $15 an hour, so maybe, maybe...
I don't come babysit for you.
Yeah, I need to sharpen my negotiation skills. I would just say, I wouldn't be, for, like my motion, I wouldn't be in favor of a friendly amendment, sort of, you know, introducing this sort of phased-in process for smaller businesses. I could, if ultimately that is what is a majority of support, I could still support it with that amendment. I would not, with my motion, support that as an addition because I get back to that we are talking about minimum wage, right? And so, and again, I have never run a small business, and so I appreciate that I don't know the particulars of those challenges. But I do think that, for me, that the overriding sense is that what I feel is the minimum value of labor that should be offered in our community, and for, you know, that a business would pay. And for me, I'm comfortable with the $15. Like I said, if there is a majority support for that, then I could go along with that, but I wouldn't be, for my motion, in support of it.
Okay, so to be clear, right now, your motion is that the two hours, no small business step, and that's the only things that have been discussed about. Do we need to discuss the learner wage permit and whether or not, the learner wage provision, whether or not it can drop below, drop below state? Or, that was a question raised by Ms. Dean. Is that possible?
So it's my understanding of the California, the direction from the Californian Department of Industrial Relations and Labor Code, that there is provision for what's called a sub-minimum wage, and that's how it's referenced in the staff report for learners. And it's an acknowledgement that there is a time period where somebody may be paid less than the minimum wage.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion? Do we have a second on the motion? Let's go ahead and vote.
All right. I'm just saying I'm voting against this. I absolutely am for minimum wage, absolutely. But I have a real problem on the impact for small businesses to not be a little bit more gentle in stepping this in. But I am for the minimum wage. I don't want anyone to think I'm not.
Motion passes four to one with Councilmember Carlton abstaining.
All right, so we're done on that item for the evening, and we're moving on to the next. Councilmember Nash?
Is there anything that our Economic Development Department can do, working with small businesses, to maybe brainstorm? Is there anything else that, given this passing?
Councilmember Nash, the, we, our Economic Department Development Team is a member, has a person power, people power of one, John Passman. He gave the presentation at the community meeting. He is very open to working and brainstorming ideas with members of the business community to help in any way that we can.
Okay, so we're moving on now to informational item H. No presentations, no staff available for question, oh, staff is available for questions. Anyone have any questions about item H1 or H2? Nope?
Yes, H2.
Oh, Councilmember Nash, item H2, update on emergency water supply, water storage supply project. Hey, Justin. Mr. Murphy, our Public Works Director. So, any questions?
I am, I guess it's more of a statement, first of all. It seems to me that drilling a second well should be a top priority for our city. When we have an earthquake, residents of Menlo Park will be without water, could be without water, and it seems like this should be an extremely high priority. And my question would be, what do we need to delay to get this as a high priority?
Yes, it is a, is a high priority. Our first priority is completing the well that's currently under construction. So in terms of, if your question is, in terms of other potential changes that we would need to do, I wouldn't be able to answer that question tonight. That would be something we could look at through the upcoming review of the council work plan, but there could be various things that we'd have to look at. One of the key things, though, there's going to be community engagement involved. There's been pretty, even today, I was revisiting a staff report from 2003. This topic has been going on for a number of years, and we've had some community engagement challenges over the years that we've learned from, that we're trying to apply with this so that we don't revisit problems that we experienced in the past.
Another question, thank you. Has anyone talked with the fire district about, to see if we can drill on the land that they just purchased, rather than having to make a separate agreement with the seminary?
Yeah, we've had multiple discussions with the fire district, and their initial preference is for us, the city, to continue our path with the seminary, and they have expressed that if that, if we reach a complete dead end there, that they'd be willing to kind of meet again. But the land that they've acquired, they acquired for a purpose, and they have intended use for that land. But if it was a push come to shove and there was no other option, they're happy to talk with us, but we don't think we're at that point just yet.
Okay. It sounds like we're doing what we can at this point, but I just would emphasize that this, to me, this is, really should be a high priority for the city.
All right. Any other questions on the item? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to city manager's report. Is there a city manager report this evening?
Just very quickly, council, the, just wanted to let you know that I, the Public Engagement Manager, Mayor Protem Taylor, and Administrative Services Director Lenka Diaz, will be attending the Government Alliance on Race and Equity session in Oakland, California. I don't know why I said California. I think there is one somewhere else.
There is an Oakland somewhere else, actually, so fair enough.
In Oakland on all-day Thursday and all-day Friday, so I will be out of the office, and we hope to come back with some really great ideas.
Thank you. Okay, any city councilmember reports this evening?
I think you all know, because we voted on it previously, I will be going to the California League of Cities event representing us. I'm speaking on a panel, because I'm president this year of the LGBTQ Caucus, so I'll be speaking there and participating as well.
Okay. Any other councilmember reports?